Are we ready? Are we ready? And let's get started. Welcome, everyone, to this special city council agenda session. May we have a real call?
Yes, Councilmember Urbana. Councilmember Jimenez will be absent the entire meeting. Vice Mayor McLaughlin. Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Councilmember Zapata.
Here.
And Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Agenda review?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the audience, I'm Henry Gardner. I have attempted to facilitate these meetings in the past, and I will attempt to do so this evening with the very able assistance of the mayor and the council. Before we begin, a question was asked. Whose idea was it that we do this? And I responded that it is a matter of public record. My recollection is that when we first talked about the process for the goals and objectives, and we set the schedule for doing that, Vice Mayor McLaughlin asked if we could add the council's rules and procedures to that process. And I responded that, oh my, we'll never get through the goals and objectives. And so with my saying, could we hold off on that? Vice Mayor McLaughlin said, oh, that's fine. As long as we come back to it. And then at your last meeting, Councilmember Vice Mayor McLaughlin reminded me again, and you all agreed that we would have this special meeting to discuss the rules and procedures and effective communication. So that's how we got to be here. Before we begin, I just want to remind you briefly of what we did up to this point on this. I did interview as many of you as I could. Councilmember Jimenez was not available, and I did not press that for obvious reasons. She's recovering. And then Councilmember Willis was recovering with COVID, and I tried to contact him and thought, better you get some rest and come to the meeting. This is an open forum for the council. This, I collected your initial thoughts. You will be adding to this as we go through this process. So with that, I thought what I might do is ask you, what do you expect from this discussion? What would be helpful to you? At the end, when we've done this, what is it that you would expect we will have done with the rules and procedures and the effective communication? If you have any thoughts about that? And in any order that you want to respond?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Henry. Thank you so much for holding this meeting and for your previous meetings, which you did a great job on. So I appreciate all you've done and are doing. What I hope to get out of today's meeting, in addition to potential tweaks in our rules document, is a basic understanding of the need for better communication and responsiveness among council members, the mayor, and city staff. I do want to share a few points about what I, more specifically about what I want to get out of today's meeting. I think communication, responsibility, and healthy relationship building are key to having a better functioning city. Overall, I don't have a problem with staff's responsiveness to me. For the most part, staff is very responsive. I don't expect immediate responses, and I often say no hurry on providing a response. Most staff respond very quickly anyway, at least letting me know they'll get back with me by end of day or end of week or whatever. I always appreciate that. If there's something time-sensitive, I will put please respond in the subject line of the email. This past week, however, I did have a lack of response from a department head on a time-sensitive issue that was on the council agenda that night. I emailed that department head at 8:20 something in the morning, so there was plenty of time. I added in the subject line to please respond, and I also mentioned in the text of the email to please let me know what that department head thinks. I did not get a response. I was looking throughout the day to see if I got a response, and I was just looking for a simple response as to whether or not the department head would consider removing the item completely from the agenda to provide more info for community concerns. I kept thinking I'd get that response and did not expect to be left in the dark. However, that is exactly what happened. Not only did I not get a response, but the department head must have put out the word to some departmental staff, because this was being discussed on social media. So when a department head will not respond to a council member's simple question and instead feels it's okay to put the word out to departmental staff and then to social media, it's hard to develop trust with that person. I shared all the concerns I received from the community in a very transparent way by email, and yet I was ignored while others were brought into the conversation on social media. That, in my view, doesn't help build trust. I think it's known by the city manager and other staff, as well as the council, that I often bring up the need to hear from staff, whether it's in closed session or open session. I often say I can't make a decision until I get all the information. Even if I agree with others on the councilants, and I know staff may have a countering view, I still think balance is important. So I've tried my best to create a bit of balance when controversies have come up between other council members and city staff. I will keep doing this, but I want a commitment from the city manager to advise all her management leadership team, all the department heads, to be responsive to council member requests in a very timely way on time-sensitive issues. I know the city manager often talks about the council and the MLT being thought partners. I hope that is not an empty phrase. Ever since my experience last week with this department head, I now have an inkling of understanding of some of the frustration my council colleagues have had with some staff, including the city manager. I also want us to make a modification of our rules to make sure that council member requests outside of a council meeting do not take up too much of staff's time. Our rules say only a reasonable amount of staff time should be taken up, you know, in between council meetings by one or, you know, less than a quorum. We need to define what a reasonable amount of time is. But back to responsiveness. I am hopeful that we all are more responsive to each other, including the mayor and his office. I have experienced some frustration in that regard with not always getting a response from the mayor or his office. Now, I understand that everybody's busy, staff, mayor staff, mayor. But I hope that responsiveness to council colleagues becomes a high priority for the mayor's office, even if only to say, we can't respond right now, but we'll get back with you soon. And then the follow-up of getting back needs to happen. As an outcome of this meeting today, I would like to know that the mayor agrees and will work to make sure there is more responsiveness to his council colleagues. So finally, my hope is that the city manager utilizes her skills to try and bridge the gap between the often purely business and/or technical view of city staff and the council's representative role. For the most part, the council can work through our own discussions, so I'm not asking for intervention. However, if the city manager always refers to staff's perspective as unyielding, we could be heading for worse times ahead. There are times, yes, that the city manager needs to push a certain outcome, but there are other times when various outcomes are acceptable. And the city manager, in my view, should be working to bridge the gap between the council and staff whenever possible. That will go a long way to building trust with the council. So those are my comments to what I hope to get out.
Knowing what we're trying to do here, what would you expect to get out of this session today? Or is that something you still want to ponder? Maybe you'll have a better view when we've gotten into it. But are there other comments, introductory comments people would like to make about what you expect? Councilmember Urbana?
Thank you. So I would like to learn how to change the rules and procedures. I asked the city clerk. I'm not sure if I got a good answer or if I received an answer. I have some suggestions about changing the rules, so I hope we get to discuss those. It's very important. Teamwork is very important. Mutual respect is very important, not just between council members, council members. And it's, I mean, just fostering teamwork. And I know rules and procedures talks about decorum. We need to exercise it a bit more. I'm not sure if we can put it in rules and procedures, but we can just talk about it, maybe the willingness, group's willingness to do that. That's basically it. And also following the rules. I think, I'm a very pragmatic person. Everybody who knows me know as an engineer, you know? I try to be very pragmatic. But when it comes to legality of a stuff, I think we need to stay firm on following the rules and legalities at the city council. I don't think if that's the case, we should do a better job. I don't know how it goes with this, if it's the place to discuss it or not. Thank you.
Thank you. I did have the staff prepared it. I went through your rules and procedures, and I pulled out, you'll see, several items for review. Some of it's going to go very quickly. You can already know that. There are others where you're going to want to have focused discussion about. So I think you'll see that as we go through it. So I have taken from your rules and procedures. I think I have about 17 topics. But again, half of those will go very quickly. And then I think you're going to want to really get into some discussion about, further discussion and clarification of what the rules be and how they are applied. Others? What do you expect or hope to get out of this?
Yes, go ahead. Zapata?
Mayor, I just wrote down some, just wrote down some thoughts here. Learning about the timing of the agenda, its review, and our personal review time, right? When we get it, usually either on Thursday or Friday. Maybe sharing common practices. Everyone might be different with our own timing. I know when I get it, I try to review it that weekend. We all might be different. We all have different times. Some of us work, some of us might not work. Maybe just sharing some of that among colleagues, see if we can learn from each other. Some of you have been in the council for many years. You might have some tips there on what do we do so that way we can put our thoughts and questions together on a timely basis so that we can then give them over to staff on a timely basis so that we can also get that returned back. Or either we try to speak with other colleagues on a certain topic and see how that might be. And then I believe you're going to be touching on the Brown Act as well, so making sure that we're all somewhat set on the Brown Act. And what does a BCC do to the Brown Act in an email?
I'm sorry, what does what?
BCC, blind copy. How does that go along with Brown Act requirements?
Okay, I'll leave that to your council.
And then also overall, providing each other with support. I think that we're one council, and whenever we can provide support to each other, I would welcome it. And there's also any input and feedback from each other on how we can work together. So I look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Others? And you can come back. This doesn't close it, as I said, as we get into the discussion. Some of you haven't spoken, we'll say, well, wait a minute. Here's what I hope we'll get out. We still have two hours left. Yes?
And may I clarify my last point about the support? I meant that both from my colleagues on the council, but also from staff. I know that you're all very busy, so if there's anything that, I'll use myself as an example, anything that I can do better to communicate so that out of the thousands of emails you all get, how can I make sure that mine doesn't just become one more in the list that you have to respond to and are so busy, but that we better communicate? So it goes both ways, because in order for us to get a response, figuring out those pieces there, so thank you.
Okay, if no further comments at this point, let's go to the rules.
Before we go on, I have a few things that I'd like to have as outcomes. One of them, and I think the major thing, is self-reflection. I think that this gives us an opportunity to not only look at rules, procedures, but also to look at relationships and at ourselves. So a lot of what happens, happens because of the relationship that we have with others, and half of that responsibility is ours. So if we don't take that responsibility as we look at the situation, then we're not doing our job as the fellow human. The other thing that I want to look at is there is so much work that needs to take place. And because of the amount of work, there's a lot of balls that are dropped. And the question is, are those balls dropped because we don't have the support necessary in order to do the work? Or are they done because we're consumed with other things? So I think in this process, we should look and see what things are failing because of lack of support and what things are failing because of ourselves.
Okay. We will attempt to address those. Any others? I don't want to rush this part of the process. All right, if no further introductory comments, then, if we can go to your rules and procedures. And you will see, the first thing I have up there, if you can see it. You first adopted these rules in 2013. They were amended in 2014. They were amended again in 2014. And then since July 2021, they've been amended three more times. So I just want you to see that you have been active in amending the rules. Okay? Next slide, please. What I did was to interview you, and I did not put names by any of these. I proceeded both in this part and in the effective communications piece. I took the view that what was important is not so much who said it. What is important is that somebody said it, and it's important to somebody. So I put it up here. And I was trying to make sure there were no constraints about people being candid and forthright about issues that are concerning to them. So here is what I heard with respect to the rules and procedures. How are they being modified? Should we prohibit group texts? Well, we should prohibit group texts during closed sessions. How to ask questions of council members? How to get items on the agenda? How to get items withdrawn from the agenda before it is published? Recognize order of speakers. A comment was, meetings are going well. We can always do better. Before pulling an item from consent calendar, try to meet with staff or council member. If substantive concerns are raised regarding a consent item, staff should respond. If statement and questions include the five minutes, what is the time limit for extended questions of staff? What is the process for submitting proclamations? By when and to whom? Need training on the Brown Act and Rosenberg's Rule of Order? Your rules and procedures refer to Rosenberg's Rules of Order instead of Robert's Rules of Order. The role of the city attorney interpreting the rules. Comment, the mayor runs the meeting. The difference between what is spoken during discussion and a motion that was approved. The point there is that the action that then that the staff is to take is based on the motion as stated and approved, not a reinterpretation of all the discussion that took place leading up to the motion, which may differ, be different from actually the motion that was stated and approved. More clarity around the five-minute rule. I mentioned that one before. So with that, I want to go into briefly, and stop me anywhere along the way with the discussion. These are the things that I pulled out from your rules and procedures. One, can we pull that one up? Duties of the mayor. That's pretty well stated. Reside at the meetings of the council, provide strict order and decorum, state every question coming before the council, announce the decision. The mayor has final say on all rules, subject to being overruled by a majority of the city council. Any questions or comments about that? Next slide. Duties of the council. For regular and special meetings, council members shall take their regular stations in the council chambers. That's for regular meetings, because you're not in your regular stations, right? And that was deliberate. We're not violating the rules. The rules say regular meetings. This is special meeting. The business of the council shall be taken up for consideration and disposition pursuant to Article III of the City Charter. Any questions? If you have any questions about that, you're going to have to ask the city attorney. But we're clear about that? Okay, the next one. Your regular meetings are the first and third Tuesdays. Incidentally, I didn't see anything about if there's a fifth Tuesday, but I guess you just don't do anything with that unless there's a special meeting. Yes, Melvin? I'm sorry, I need to be more formal.
Melvin's fine. You have me call you Henry after all. Yeah, we have a fourth Tuesday, but every second and fifth Tuesday, we don't meet.
Your regular meetings should be reserved for items requiring council action. You are to begin at 6:30, and you're to adjourn by 11:00 PM unless the time is extended by the consent of the council majority. Any motion to extend beyond 11:00 PM? You have to list the specific agenda items to be discussed or approved, and shall specify the order these items shall be handled. Next slide. We hold your regular meetings again on the fourth Tuesday of the month as needed. Study sessions, presentations, proclamations, commendations, time-sensitive items. Items expected to take more than an hour will be scheduled for that meeting. When possible, agenda items anticipated to be lengthy should appear as the first item on the agenda. You have study for action sessions may result in a city council motion that provides policy direction to staff. So your first, fourth Tuesday meetings, those are generally the subjects. Any questions or comments about those? All right, next slide. Special meetings, called at any time by the mayor or majority of the council in accordance with government code. The call and notice of special meeting should specify the time and place of the special meeting and the business to be transacted. You are limited to only the noticed item on the agenda for a special meeting. And brilliant thoughts that occur to us once that notice has been posted, you are restricted to what is on that agenda. And brilliant ideas would have to be postponed to a future meeting. Next slide. Your recess currently is the first Tuesday in August until the Tuesday following Labor Day. During this recess period, the city manager is given certain authority to take action, particularly around ministerial actions or matters of operational urgency. However, during the recess period, the city manager is taking those actions but may not take any action that is reserved to the council by charter. If there is action that is required that the charter says only the council may do it, would call for a special meeting even during your recess. Generally, these are ministerial and, again, management decisions. They are making new laws or new rules. That goes beyond what this delegation provides. Next slide. The Rosenberg Rules of Order. It is, the League of California adopted this as a guide for cities. Many cities historically, and many even today, still use Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order are extremely complicated, and many argue that you really need to be almost expert in Robert's Rules of Order, especially when you've got motions to do various things, what the order is. One that I know particularly kind of trips people up is when there is a motion on the floor, and then there is a substitute motion, and which goes first, and how that works. And you really need to know the rules pretty well to interpret a lot of that stuff. But yours is the Rosenberg Rules of Order, and there are some cross-references in the charter under section, well, it's in the charter. Okay, next slide. Your quorum is four. And during the course of the meeting, the chair notes, clerk calls for quorum, and there is no quorum. And so then what your rules provide is that within three minutes of that roll call, the mayor may recess the meeting for up to 30 minutes, waiting for others to come and make the quorum. But if no more show up, as you've only got four, the meeting is adjourned, and you may not take any official action because you do not have a valid constituted meeting. Next slide. Decorum. While the council is in session, you're required to preserve order and decorum. You may not, by conversation, actions, delay, interrupt proceedings or the peace of the council, or disturb any member while speaking, nor refuse to obey the orders of the council or the presiding officer, in this case, the mayor. Council members shall use discretion and leave the chamber to discuss items with the public. Council members are prohibited from using a cell phone or pager during a meeting. That actually includes your closed sessions as well. Except for urgent matters. And we all know what those are, clearly. You've got a babysitter taking care of the kids that you've got to call. That's more important than whatever's going on in this chamber. Avoid disruption and avoid a perception of Brown Act violations. So the point here is, it is not, it goes with ethics as well. It is not only the actual violation, it is also the appearance of one. And that is absolutely true for ethics as well. The appearance sometimes is more damning to the city's reputation than the actual violation. So appearances need to be avoided as well. Maintain a professional decorum during the business meetings. Adhere to the city's code of ethics. Limit questions to staff and other presenters to actual questions rather than statements. Council members' comments and questions will be limited to five minutes per item. Now, what happens when a council member has been recognized? And the council member has five minutes, and five minutes are used to make the statement and to ask the question. Staff is called to the podium. Council member asks a second question, and the staff responds. Council member asks a third question. Staff responds. Now we're seven, eight minutes in. I'm not answering the question. I'm just posing the question. What is the rule? When do you say, you know? Any questions or comments about that? Councilmember Robinson?
So I do wonder if you're trying to answer a question and the person you're asking the question to is not answering your question. Like, can they just?
Being evasive, you mean?
Yeah. Can they just run your time out? And you just don't get to try to clarify to get answered to your question?
What is your response to that?
When I time a council member's time, it's time that they are speaking, not the time that they are being answered. So if they, if staff talks for half an hour and your question only took 30 seconds, you still have four minutes and 30 seconds.
Yes?
The word pager tells us that these are definitely outdated?
Yeah, well, they're, thank you for pointing that out.
I don't see facts in here, but I'm sure that probably was a typo that didn't make it on here.
Yeah, well, it's been updated regularly. But I think even as late as 2021, that one could have come out.
Yes.
There, you have something else in there that is outdated, and I flagged it, and I talked to the mayor about it. There are references in here to standing committees, and I thought, well, I remember standing committees from way back, but since I've been around lately, I don't remember anything about standing committees. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, on the five-minute rule, I mean, as those of us who were around on the council at the time might have been just the mayor and myself, there, in fact, were you around when the five-minute rule came up? You were not, okay. So, but you were probably paying attention, yeah. And others may have as well. So it came about for a specific reason because one council member was kind of giving soliloquies or, you know, long 40-minute statements. And, you know, we had to find a way. And he would be very disrespectful if you tried to ask him to, you know, wrap up. But I'm wondering if we really need it. But I'm wondering if we really need it, number one. Maybe we do. Number two, the idea of, I understand that the mayor does the stop and start of the stopwatch, but number one, I don't think the mayor should have to do that because he has to pay attention to the meeting. And the clerk at one time did it, so I don't know if that's a better way to do it. But also the idea of stopping after the question, and I certainly understand that, you know, a staff member could take up all the time if we include the staff member, but go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I should let you finish your statement because I have a response to that.
Let me finish, yeah, so to finish what I was saying, and I'm kind of just trying to figure out what is the best way. I don't, you know, I don't have the full answer here. But I know, having watched, as we all probably have congressional hearings, some, you know, they often have a certain amount of time. And if they're questioning someone, that, the answer of that person is included in their time because they often say, please hurry up, you're using up all my time. So I don't know, because the problem isn't that the councilmember by asking all these questions that are very short, you know, would take up so much time. But sometimes staff gives a long answer, and although that might be a nice thing for the councilmember, or maybe for the council as a whole, to hear, it also might be taking up more time, like, from the other councilmembers. If we want to ask a question and we're having to wait for these long answers, et cetera. So I don't know what's the fairest way forward, but I just, you know, want to raise the issue.
Director, Councilmember Robinson.
So I see that, but I also feel like it's important for us to be able to make sure we completely understand an issue. And I wonder if we were to shift so that it's just five minutes, counting all responses, that we could have more than one, one five-minute section to ask questions. So that you would have, you would cycle through everyone who wanted to ask questions first, everybody gets five minutes total, answer and all, but you could go back through and ask another question if not all your questions were answered. If there was a, if we adjusted the rules in that way, then I would be a minimal, but I feel like...
The rules are that way. It does say you could have more than one round of five minutes.
I'm going to bring it up in a minute.
It's in our...
No, I'm going to bring it up in a minute.
Isn't it?
It is, that's correct.
Yeah, I'm going to bring it up in a minute.
It's more than one, and it also gives two special five-minute things, which is kind of confusing. That was a Jim Rogers thing, for those who remember Jim Rogers.
So I'm just going off of what is written here.
Exactly, but I'm glad you raised the question though, because even going to where we're going now doesn't really answer your question of how you move that. Because I would suggest that whatever rule you put in place, to have, whether it's the councilmember or whether it's the staff response, the chair has to moderate that at some point. It can't go on and on and on, because if you're not getting the answer, the staff is being evasive. To continue that dialogue for 30 minutes, and Sepeta is waiting to comment on the same item, and Councilmember Bana hasn't said a word yet on the item, I think that maybe, maybe when that happens, the chair, even the councilmember to chair, has to say, this is not responsive. And if you are not going to answer the question, we need to move on. Or I take, or as they do in Congress, they say, I take the answer to mean no. Yes.
Just a point of clarification, I was saying that we would actually, the suggestion is if we wanted to change this, so that instead of not running the clock when we're getting the answer, but running the clock for the full time and stopping at five minutes whether or not you got the answer, that you would actually stop at five minutes whether or not you got the answer. But then you would be able to answer, after everyone else got a chance to ask questions, you would be able to ask either another question, maybe people would answer it in a different way, maybe you wouldn't have to ask it anymore. I'm just saying that I'm not, I'm not at all suggesting that we go on and on and on forever.
No, you were suggesting just the opposite, actually, that if someone wanted an answer. I think, I think the rules actually already provide pretty much what you just said. I think the chair, the mayor, mayor speak.
Actually, what Councilmember Robinson is suggesting would actually provide staff to do what you did not like, which is councilmember asks a question, staff uses the five minutes, and then you get a chance to ask another question, and the staff could use your other five minutes. And so you only get to ask a minute's worth of questions.
I, Councilmember Sepeta.
What I, what I think we have as process now, and I correct me if I'm wrong here, Mr. Mayor, but your current process is we, the first, we're supposed to, doesn't always happen, the first round is questions, and then the second round are more statements. So we want to say, I disagree with this, that's, the mayor allows that to not be questions. So that way, we have to all be on the same page to know when do you ask the questions, when do you make the I statements? And then knowing that the first round of questions or statements are based on the broader agenda item, and then we get another round already once a motion's made, because we get to make questions on the motion that's on the floor. So that brings another set of timing.
Vice Mayor.
So it says right here in the rules, I mean, I actually was on the rules committee, so I know these pretty well, that when we had a rules committee.
What page? Excuse me, excuse me, should we just bring up that, because I think where you're going is on this next slide.
Bring up the actual document, yeah. Page five. It says, at the bottom of page five, under roman numeral three, C, which is decorum and discussion for council members. And so it says at the very bottom paragraph, "Councilmember's comments and questions will be limited to five minutes per item. After each councilmember has had a turn," and this part I didn't state, but I'm realizing now, I'm remembering, "the council may vote on a non-debatable motion to have additional rounds also limited to five minutes." So there needs to be a vote, like someone says, okay, well, I still have more questions. I move, we have another five minutes for everybody who wants another five minutes. And then this, this special considerations thing never worked. So I would suggest we move that out. It's too much to keep track of, like, oh, you could have a special five minutes, you know, two overall in the whole meeting. But I want to say that the issue of questions and comments, we never had, well, at least from the time I was mayor, and I believe going forward, I think it got confused that questions only during public hearings, public hearings on like development issues and such. There's a legal reason why you don't want to give your position right up front, because you want to hear from the public. That's a legal importance. But on staff items or council items, I don't see a problem with if you want to, because a lot of councilmembers will ask a question, and they'll use comments to lead up to their question. But I would rather have that five minutes for either questions or comments, or maybe a combination of both. Because there are some, because if a count, if a staff member is giving a 20 to 30-minute presentation, and it's clear you have some objections to it, I think it's good to put it out there and then hear from the public, and then come back, and, you know, you can have further discussion. But within your five minutes, I, it always was that way, you know, that I can remember, comments and questions, except for public hearings when you start out with questions only. That's my recollection.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, the document...
Let me see if I can get everybody to the same place. Did we find it? Because I did flag that.
It's up there. In the paragraph before the one that Vice Mayor McLaughlin referenced, it says, "Councilmembers shall limit their questions to staff and other presenters to actual questions rather than statements." So that's...
That would need to perhaps be changed.
And it did not say special meetings or any other meetings. It was just, you know, so, so I have been adhering to what it says. And, you know, until it's changed, I will continue to do so.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I, I think that that is actually, I mean, I think it can be confusing, and I understand that. But I think when you are asking a question, it is basically saying the question should be a question rather than a statement. But I don't think it says anywhere that you should not give comments within that five minutes. But if you're fielding questions to staff, to staff, you know, hey, you're not going to want to, you know, you want to make sure it's formed in a question if you're looking for an answer rather than. But I can see how it's kind of confusing, and I, and again, I mean, I just think it's, it's done in other cities, as I understand it. You can pretty much, I mean, in other bodies that I serve on, you could pretty much share a little bit of your perspective as well as ask a question. I mean, not, all bodies don't have timing, but if we're going to stick with timing, it certainly should be done within that. But I don't know, that would be a determination of the council, I guess.
Okay, and to me, it's always been clear that questions were to elicit understanding of the items, and the questions happened before public comment. After public comment, we hear what the public thinks, and then we respond. The second, the second half is discussion, which are statements. And the statements could have questions, because what you hear may bring up more questions. So, so the second five minutes that we have in our, in our city council items, you know, is first five minutes, questions, second five minutes, discussion, meaning, statements, and questions.
So I would, I would just like to present a different perspective, because staff are not our teachers, you know, and it's not like we ask them questions like we ask a professor. We ask questions when we legally are required to not provide our position. But if we have, it's like if we, if we already have a position and staff is saying this, and you want to say, well, I disagree with that because of this and this. Now, you know, I don't know how my other colleagues feel, but that's my position. I don't see a problem with it, that's just where I'm at.
Do you think your rules prohibit you from doing that?
I don't think, well, this one sentence that the mayor brought out is kind of confusing. I did see that as well, and I kind of said, well, maybe that meant when they're asking questions to staff, they shouldn't, they should make, make it clear that it is a question, rather than saying, hey, staff, you're wrong on this, you know? And, you know, something, just coming off as, I thought, maybe antagonistic, but I don't know if, I mean, the mayor obviously interpreted it as just ask questions. And I, it's a reasonable interpretation, so I'm not, I'm just saying that that probably should be altered if we are going to allow for questions and comments apart from separating them with, with the public hearing.
The goal, as I understand it, one is to set some boundaries so that you don't have open in the 12-hour meetings. But also to make sure that there's room for ample question and debate. And once those are set, you know, the mayor is running the meeting. And back to Councilmember Robinson's earlier question, I would still say that under your current rules, I don't read anything in here that would prohibit the mayor from saying, "Councilmember Robinson, the staff does not seem to be either understanding your question or is not responding to your question, and with your permission, we should move on or do some follow-up." But not have the staff person take up his time, her time, and his time, and it's already 10:30 at night.
But do you?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can I just, one follow-up question? To get, I don't know, maybe even a legal opinion, or Henry, if you have an opinion on this.
I don't have a legal opinion. If I do, I won't share it.
So let's say, let's say one of us is, the staff gives a presentation, and, well, I still have a concern about this and that, and I'm holding, you know, holding to that, and, you know, I know we're going to be discussing this after the public comment, but I, I feel like, you know, this isn't exactly fit into what I think is best for the community. And I worry that if I said something like that, or any councilmember said something like that, the mayor would say, no, you have to ask a question. Now, sometimes it has been that way, sometimes you've been more flexible, I know, and I appreciate the flexibility. So I just would like clarity as, is it okay to, in that first period?
Before...
That's your decision.
Yeah. I would like to say that when I'm flexible is when we have time. If we are pressed for time, I'm, I'm very, very strict about, about questions.
But why? Could I ask you whether it's five, if it's five minutes? I mean, you know, five minutes for just comments or questions, I don't understand. It's still five minutes.
Right. You, there have been times where the buzzer goes off, and that's because you've spent five minutes making a statement without asking a question, and then when the question comes, you want more time to ask the question.
No, no, you should be, I understand being strict with the five minutes. I'm just saying, within that five minutes, I, I would just prefer either, either questions or comments.
Okay. More flexibility within the five minutes is what you're saying.
Okay, I, I hear your preference. Councilmember Bana.
Thank you. To have a productive meeting, I'm going to be brutally honest with everyone, nobody likes long meetings. I hate long meetings. I mean, it's sleeping is a human right, so, seriously, and it damages your health. So I really appreciate the mayor's efforts to keep it short, and all of us need to be concise, including the staff, and save as much time as possible. At the same time, I was shocked in a way that at the city council, when I arrived, everybody's supposed to come with their opinions. There is no room for discussion. There, I mean, it's said in a way, ask your questions, and then, so allowing those comments with questions maybe helps me understand the position of my colleagues, look at things at a different angle. I may not know all the aspects, I didn't, so learning about their way of thinking helps me, so I do appreciate that. So maybe we can accommodate comments and questions together as long as we can keep things short. And I agree that it should be the city clerk keeping time, not the mayor, so the mayor can focus on the subject. And the city clerk keeps time, thank you.
Councilmember Sepeta.
I also may make a suggestion, if we look at the end and goal, the agendas sometimes have many, many items, and if the end and goal is to get to all of them, we've got to give ourselves that time. And I appreciate the mayor trying to keep us on, in there. What about if we were to add time on the agenda as well for each item? So this item will have one hour, for example, and then we, it'll be easier to kind of know and say, okay. And the mayor, I know, because I sit next to him, he'll be like, you really got to ask that question? And since I back off, I'm like, nope, it's, look at the time. But, but that's a reminder to tell us, right? I think that when I'm here for my colleagues, each item's going to tell us, okay, we have one hour for this item. If we went an hour and a half, the ones at the bottom of the list, we can start letting staff go home, because we're not going to make it to the end of the list. And that would also help keep us on track, I think. So we kind of get to question, like, do I really need to ask that one last question? Or can I, do I have enough to make my decision at the end of the day?
The mayor was answering the vice mayor's question about, well, if it's only five minutes, what is the big difference? And I was signaling to the mayor, because I've seen him do it, what he's doing is, you see, it's 11:15. You know, we need to wrap it up, right? I have personally used that when I have chaired meetings. I go beyond that, and I do not recommend it. What, I, I go beyond that. I'd only put 30 minutes. I put the time of the evening that we should be at this item. Now, the problem with that is that if you were to do that, then you may not, because under the Brown Act, now, you may not take that item up before that time comes up. But I find that even more effective than just saying it's an hour, so then everybody's looking and saying, well, my goodness. We, this thing says that by nine o'clock, we should be on item 12, and we're still on item four. It tends to, it works. It tends to push people along and say, we will never get through this. But, but you aren't, you don't have those limitations if you just put the time you plan to spend on it. But once you put the hour there, you may not discuss it until that hour comes. You can discuss it later, but you can't discuss it before. Yes. Mr. Willis.
This just comes down to personal style, and I'm saying this knowing everybody's going to do whatever they're going to do at the end of the day. But I know one thing that I've noticed over years, over the years, is just some of the questions that tend to get asked are, I don't know, sometimes it's follow-up questions, or nitpicking, or getting too much into weeds, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's a question that's going to be a deal breaker on how someone's going to move. that's going to be a deal breaker on how someone's going to move forward or go on an item, it's just kind of like for additional clarity. And one thing that I just for myself try to keep in mind, which I'm not perfect at this, I just try to when I think about it, is just stick to the questions that are going to be a deal breaker for me and to leave all the other questions that I want to ask, either as something to follow up offline or if there's an important question for the public that needs to be asked so it can be publicly out there. So, for me, it's just like, in the meetings, I just would hope that we just limit the questions to like, what are the absolutely sore points, like this is going to make or break, where I'm going to go, or what is absolutely essential for the public to know in this juncture? Because sometimes, it will be often where staff will say one thing and then maybe it wasn't in the initial question, then there's additional follow-up based on additional questions that get asked and we go into a rabbit hole that leads to another scenario that isn't even on the item necessarily, just kind of adjacent to the item. So, that's just something that I've noticed and, you know, I think in general, when I'm thinking about time management, I'm also thinking about how much questions are we as a body, as a whole, asking versus giving opportunity for the public to get their two cents in so they're not sitting there for 45 minutes just watching us talk. And sometimes, because of the late hour, people trickle out because they got to go home, so I just try to, you know, whatever we get out of it, I'm trying to find a balance personally on how do we get those main questions that need to be asked, asked? How do we make sure we're being considerate to the public who need to, you know, get their two cents in before they need to go home and then saving our statements till before the vote? Because technically, we're really not supposed to have a final decision on items until after we've heard from the public and been to that process and I think that's just a good practice to have, even if you already have a bias. It's good just to be open to other considerations until we get to that final moment, like, "Okay, trying to make a decision, do I still feel the same way I felt before I walked in here versus after hearing from the public?"
Mr. Mayor.
We do have council members who tend to get off the, the track and discuss aspects which really had nothing to do with the item, you know, and, you know, that happens. But in terms of determining what is essential, I think is something more personal. Some people think deeper than others and for those of us who actually know that the devil is in the details and we want to know the details so that we know what the devil is doing, we have more questions. And, and, you know, it's essential for us to ask those questions, to have an understanding to give a pragmatic and, and informed decision.
Madam Vice Mayor.
I just want to come in on the idea that, you know, I, that Councilmember Zapata had, which is a good idea, many of us thought it was and it, we did try it at one point. I guess since I have, you know, all this, this experience, I keep having to go back to that and, and we could change it and we don't have to stick to the best. But we did try it and we would put, like you said, Henry, a specific time, like this item will start at, at 8:30. And then if we move forward and we move faster, we can't hear that one until 8:30. But also with time, I'm wondering, and this might be a legal question, even if we say one hour and then it's going, you know, if the council votes to continue it beyond one hour and the public is, is there thinking the next item is going to happen after an hour, I wonder if there's a problem with putting timing on it if we don't stick specifically or if we move faster than the hour, if that becomes a problem for the public.
Mr. Mayor.
And there's one other aspect that's not being considered in the time factor and that is public comment. It's real hard to know whether there's going to be a lot of people or a few people, so we would basically be having to make a decision at a next council meeting because the time was over because of the public speakers.
You do try to constrain, that's the wrong word, you do try to manage that in your rules based on the number of speakers who want to speak. And it's, I think I put it up here. If it's a relatively small number, I think you say something like three minutes, if it's a bigger number, forgot what a number is, I think you give them maybe two minutes and then at the tail end, maybe it's a minute and a half or something like that. Those are in your rules. It doesn't answer that perfectly. One of the things though that is really the case here is that you are a public body and not even a nonprofit. There are all these things that you, you're required to do, that you have a lot more flexibility if you're a 501(c)(3). You have total flexibility if you're private for profit. Trying to balance, having the meeting move at, you know, a reasonable pace, not trying to, trying to avoid making decisions at 11:30 at night when everybody is absolutely spent. You start at four o'clock, is it four? You start four o'clock with the closed session. I mean, people have been at this now for eight, 10 hours. They're done, they're spent. On the other hand, you're a deliberative body, so when you talk about having that discussion, robust discussion around issues that are very important, all of that comes into mix in trying to, trying to manage it. So, it's, you're not alone.
Can I jump in for a moment? Their current rules, if that's okay, page eight, it's rule 4D, actually, and I think Vice Mayor McLaughlin touched on this, specifically talks about time setting, the time limits, if it's a, as a courtesy to the public, if it's something of considerable public interest. But it specifically states that if the time appears on the council agenda, in no event will the agenda item be heard or discussed before its estimated time. So, it sounds like maybe, maybe the council tried it in years past because of these, you know, because we do have the rule that's already in place, but I don't.
Try, try it again, you know? I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but I, I do know it was discontinued because it just wasn't working out. I mean, we would say, "Oh, well, now we have to move this item up because we're not quite at the time yet for this timed item." And then, you know, public would say, "Oh," they would say later, "Well, this was later in the, in the agenda, I didn't expect you to hear it so soon." And, I mean, I don't know if that's, if that would be explicitly a Brown Act violation, but that's something, I guess we thought it was just not working.
Not working. Has the council considered for, when you look at the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, now, once you've published the agenda and you haven't said anything about what time these are going to come up and you haven't put anything down there about, this one is 30 minutes or whatever, I'm not aware and council can advise you. I'm not aware of any Brown Act that would prohibit you, given what I said. You haven't put any times on it, you haven't said how much time you're going to spend on it. At the beginning of the meeting, the mayor looks at the agenda and he sees there are several regular items on there. Some have, you know, there's a lot of community interest, but it's down on the agenda. There is another one that is going to require some robust deliberative discussion, that you move those up on the agenda. Have you considered that as a process? And you don't want to do that too much because then the community will say, "Well, what the heck is this? I thought this agenda was going to go in sequence." But from time to time, have you considered doing that?
We do do that and when.
Well, wait a minute, I've suggested that, I don't want to lead you to something that's a violation.
Well, no, no.
No, I think we're, you're going to say what I'm going to say is.
Yeah, so I'll let you say it.
Yeah, no, go ahead. So, we meet as a group before the agenda is published, so that's with the city clerk, the city manager, the mayor, his staff, council liaison, to talk about each agenda item and the order, potentially given kind of the number of public speakers and if one will be contentious. I mean, there's obviously specific rules around placement in terms of, you know, public hearings, budget items, but, I mean, I think we do talk about, is that, that's, is that what you were going to say?
Exactly, thank you.
That should help, I would think.
But, but also, and the mayor does this, I think, quite frequently, if there is, like you say, a lot of speakers there for one item that's way at the end or if they're young people or something, he'll say, "I want to move this one up." And the council usually agrees 100%, but we could, you know, if we didn't agree, we could say, "Well, we don't agree." But I think that's, that's good approach, I think.
Councilmember Zapata.
I think instead of maybe saying, "This item's going to be heard at eight, this one at eight thirty, et cetera," maybe just giving us a allotted time to discuss that item so that way we know we have, if we want to get to the whole agenda, this item's no more than an hour, 60 minutes, right? This one, no more than 30 minutes, whatever it is. So, that way again, we can time each other and know that we're not going to get to the end and not saying at specific time in case we also want to continue moving agenda items around because one of them is more important than the other all of a sudden. But just saying, "Hey, our goal is 60 minutes. Do you want five more minutes of comments?"
How, how, how are you proposing to do that? Would that be on the agenda?
Yeah, on the agenda and, and right provided by the mayor, saying what he reflects things might be for each agenda item.
Well, actually, I have made it known that generally, agenda items with public comment and questions and discussion and staff presentation, it, it will take up between an hour and a half to two hours. So, that means we can generally just get through two items every council meeting. And so, I've told the council that we have work to do and we need to do it quickly, you know, if we want to have it done. And then, and then on top of that, when items are taken off the consent calendar, there's another item. So, so, you know, our, our nights get long.
Any other questions or thoughts about that?
The, the city manager would like to make a statement.
Oh, yes, indeed. I, just hold a minute.
I'm watching.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate that because now I'm going to say something about the mayor, because I got some of this feedback, we're going to get into it, that the mayor doesn't always call the council members in the order in which they raise their hands. And I said, "The mayor's eyes are like this." He doesn't have eyes like this. So, somebody's over here raising their hand, I'm not going to see it. Everybody has to help. Thank you, mayor. Yes.
Recently, it's been very helpful that we've been working with the mayor to limit the number of discussion items or discussion and action items, including the budget to two items like the mayor just stated. If the council would consider that as a rule, that may be extremely helpful moving forward to ensure that staff and the council is able to get out by 11:00 PM. At this juncture, my back of the envelope math is that staff probably spends about two-thirds of their time preparing staff reports and agenda items and attending the council meeting and preparing for the council meeting. And so, that leaves about one-third of the staff time to respond to other inquiries from the council on non-agenda related matters, respond to inquiries from the public, work on other boards, commissions and committees, which we have 97 of that we staff, and do other work that has been requested. And in other cities, in Contra Costa County, my understanding is there's normally two meetings per month, so we are usually always have three. And so, to the degree that we can try to get out at 11 and have two discussion items as we've been having, that seems like that would be extraordinarily helpful.
Your rules do provide for 11 o'clock and it can be extended by vote of the council. There are a lot of items coming at you, but I would urge you to make the goal a little bit earlier than 11 o'clock. I feel your pain. You start at four. You don't start at 7:30. You start at four o'clock. And there are a lot of waiting issues and these agendas I've looked at. So, I would urge you to try, you're a deliberative body and we need to hear from everybody, everybody's got a chance to get there, but try to end before 11, if you're going to start at four. Mr. Willis.
Yeah, and another thing, just to that point, no one necessarily has to agree with me on this, but that's fine, but one thing that also goes through my brain, especially more often, is most of our staff who attend these meetings start at 8:30 and that's not if you're a sworn officer, then I don't know what time you started in the day. And sometimes they're there just waiting to either present on an item or answer questions. So, regardless of salary and benefits, it is not okay for somebody to be working that long and I'm very sensitive about that personally. And that's something that just goes through my mind, just putting it out there. So, that's just another consideration as we're talking about when we start at four. Some of our presenters are starting at 8:30, sometimes earlier that day, and they're still hanging out with us at city council.
Yeah. Okay. So, where do we go from here with this? Are there, now, this meeting is not noticed for any action. Suggestions may be made, but you may not vote. This meeting was not noticed for that. But we wanted to get through, and I think we're pretty much through, the rules and procedures, the highlights. We can quickly look and see if there's something else. But I would be interested in hearing if you have any specific ideas that you would want some further study or clarification or maybe proposed revisions. But I will remind you again that you have revised these rules.
Yes.
Every year or so.
Yeah.
Madam City Attorney, I want to make sure that we do not take any action because we didn't notice this for any action.
I think that's correct, but, you know, I don't know where you're headed, but I, in years past, was there an ad hoc committee kind of formed, making recommendations?
That was, that was a long time ago. That was 2005 when, when this, this rules document originally came about. So, we haven't had, and I don't know if, but we could make suggestions here, like, and then we don't have to vote on it, but.
You can't.
They could, the clerk or somebody could bring it to the council and, and we could vote on it there or make even further modifications. Because I was just thinking that the, that one statement that the mayor brought up might be, you know, that's kind of confusing. Council members shall limit their questions to staff and other presenters to actual questions rather than statements. I mean, it's hard to know what that means. And then, I, I do want, I don't know if you were suggesting, Henry, that we were finished with this rules document?
No, no, because I, I do have.
You have other things as well.
People call these out, so I want to make sure that I go through them. One was, and I read it early on, so maybe another 10 minutes to go through the rest of this, the rules.
Yeah, and, and on the point that, because we should at least kind of give, everybody should give their kind of thoughts, if that makes sense, what Councilmember Zapata said about having, you know, or no, first I want to discuss what the mayor and the city manager said, which I think is, is a good idea, two, two items per meeting, but do we want that in our rules or should we say, or not? Because what if there's three small items or something and on occasion it should be modified? But I like the idea that that's how things have been going, but, you know.
If I may, I, I think it's a matter of, of common sense. We, when we look at the agenda item, we estimate how much time it will take and generally it's two items per meeting. There are some items that, that are very quick and when we get those kinds of items, we could have more than them. And then, we could also have emergency items. Events come up, council members are aware of them, whereas the rest of us aren't, and the council member has a need to put an emergency item onto the council agenda. So, we need to make sure that those allowances are, have a way to, to, to make it to, to the council meeting.
Okay, if no further questions, can we push through these last few slides? I want to go through these because when I interviewed you, some of these specific questions came up. Can we go to submission of agenda?
Actually, the next page was a request for technical assistance.
Oh, I, was there any further comment about that?
Yeah, I, there, there has been a lot of questions that come up around this and I don't know if the other council members have.
I think we should discuss it, yeah.
Do you want to comment on the provision or clarification or what, what is the?
Okay.
I, I pulled it out because I thought you might want to talk about it, but I don't know what, what your issue or concern would be about it. what, what your issue or concern would be about it.
Let me. Okay, let's.
Page fifteen, I think, is your printout? Is that where you are?
I don't know. It's a reasonable amount of time, but this is outside of the council. We have to make a determination.
Okay. This, this last one, this is a request.
We're on page fifteen?
Yeah, on page fifteen. This is a request for information being considered that requires an extensive, extensive amount of staff time must be approved by the majority of the council members. Staff shall not spend any time or money pursuing initiatives that are contrary to existing public policy without first requesting and receiving direction from a majority of the city council. Now, I know that city staff has worked on items without getting direction from the city council. For instance, the Prologis project, the staff has spent a lot of hours of working on, on plans for zoning that, that's, that is, that has not been approved. So, so, you know, how, my question is, you know, how can staff be working on these things without having gone through council first? And, and, and there's, there's other things as well.
I think we have to defer, defer to the city manager. That second, that last sentence is clear on its face, so I don't think there's any issue there. So focusing on the sent, the one just above that, a request for information being considered that requires an extensive amount of staff time must be approved by majority of the council members. Do we have projects where we've spent a lot of time and you don't know anything about it and you didn't approve it?
It may be helpful for Ms. Velasco, Community Development Director, to describe the process related to the Hilltop Horizon specific plan in response to the mayor's inquiry.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Lena Velasco, Director of Community Development. So as far as the Hilltop Horizon specific plan, there was council direction provided first in the designation of Hilltop Mall and the surrounding properties as a priority development area. And then there was also authorization to seek grant funding both from the PDA program and acceptance and appropriation of the LEAP grant that was received to do this work. So.
Lena, what's a PDA?
Priority development area. And so there was various sequencing. I mean, obviously, COVID happened and we've been delayed. There was a change in property ownership. You know, we started the effort to fund the Hilltop Horizon specific plan prior to the acquisition of the property by Prologis.
Right, but that does not answer the question as to why staff was working on, on industrial use when the area is not zoned for industrial use without direction from council.
Well, as part of the community engagement process, obviously, who the new landowner is of the property came up, and the public really wanted to understand, well, what does the new buyer want to do with the property? And so it has been part of the analysis. But we're currently going to be doing a study session with the planning commission this Thursday, and we'll be coming to the city council for additional input in that process to determine the next steps for a land use alternative that will be the basis for the development of a specific plan. So no decisions around industrial uses have been made. That direction will come from the city council.
Right, but the statement says staff shall not spend any time or money pursuing initiatives that are contrary to existing public policy without first receiving, requesting and receiving direction from a, from a majority of the city council. Staff has not come to city council asking for direction to consider industrial use.
So Mayor, it's staff's intent to bring forward the public, a summary of public comments we've received and obviously of the property owner and their desire to do. So we are not writing a specific plan at this point that would enable industrial development. What we're going to bring forward is the comments we've received from the property owner as well as community members. So it's a summary right now of the feedback and the input received.
So what I'm hearing is that you have not spent any time or money pursuing the idea of industrial use.
Not pursuing it. We are summarizing it for you and for your consideration.
Okay, I would consider that pursuing. But I guess we need to get into, what's the word? Semantics. Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay. Yes, now, since councilmember Robinson is closer to me. Mr. Mayor, you do, I, I defend you. You do a masterful job. I saw both of those heads go up at the same time. Councilmember Robinson.
Yeah, thank you.
So my question is, I think we should define what we mean by a reasonable amount of time. I think it's really vague. And it, it's hard to know if this rule is being observed or violated because that's, it's, it's not a defined term.
So clearer definition of what?
Yes, and the frequency.
Yeah. Yeah, this, this is pretty finite, though. It says not spend any time or any money. But what I heard, well, it's for you to interpret the response. But I see a need for more clarity around that.
So, yeah, I mean, in the top, in the, in this section, it says, you know, a council member may request research on an item being considered. Any council member may ask staff to provide information when such a request would only require a reasonable amount of time to accomplish, as determined by the city manager. But I think it's important for us to understand what a reasonable time to accomplish means so that we know if we need to bring something to the full council as an item or if we can just ask the question.
Okay. Any other questions regarding that? So councilmembers Zapata, I'm sorry, you were next.
I wasn't as close to you. I go second. I was going to make first a comment as well. Our committees.
I'm sorry.
We have a lot of different standing committees. We have, I can't remember all of them, the ad hoc committees, the.
Ad hoc are not standing.
Or the regional, yeah, I'm just going over a lot of different other groups, right? As, as the city manager mentioned, the, the staff attend over seventy-four different meetings at one time.
Yeah, ninety, we staff a total of, including stakeholder groups and regional entities. The list I last looked at was ninety-seven, including subcommittees.
So all of that, they're, they're also providing some kind of guidance to staff. So figuring out, and as part of this conversation, how did this all get intertwined? Because I know that some of my committees that I'm the liaison for, I'm a, you know, been here eleven months now, but prior to me, they were already doing work. And some of that work wasn't always coming from council members, some of it was committees, right? They come up with ideas as that, as they should, but they're also giving instruction to staff because that's also their role in a way. So figuring out how does that come in? So that way, if staff is working on something and we haven't given them the guidance, what should we all be looking towards? And maybe it's figuring out how does everything roll back into the, what we've been working out for the past couple of months, our goals, right? So if committees are giving action items, maybe figuring out how do they tie back to the overall city council goals? And even our own recommendations are asked, do they tie back to the goals? So we can continue that train moving forward. So that's a thought there. And then I don't know what the Richmond chapter, RMC chapter two point four oh, says city staff has the same obligation to respond to council members' requests for information as requested from the public pursuant to chapter two point four zero. This is.
What page?
Seven, page seven, item H. It's just a piece that's missing on the bottom of that there. But the city staff has the same obligation to respond to council members' requests for information as requested from the public pursuant to chapter two point four oh.
Two point four of the.
That's the Public Records Act. So that's, it's the same thing. It's in response to, we have a specific RMC section on, on producing documents in response to the Public Records Act, so it's the same. So they're just, the rule is just saying you, you have to comply in the same way we're complying with the Public Records Act, I think, right?
The Public Record Act won't necessarily have a limit, because some of them I've seen. They are very exhaustive of the request. So we're not putting a limit on how much staff time could be put into that, right? Is it kind of referencing each other? So we're, if we're putting time into doing a public acts request, which we get a lot all the time, do those have to come back to, to council when we know some of them are going to take many hours from different departments?
This is under Public Records Act? What do you do here? I don't remember those going back to council in any group I've worked.
So can you repeat what your question is? So.
Because the, the item, and I'm sorry, so the request for technical assistance and/or reports. So we're saying that we're going to limit how much time we have, and I agree with it, all right? So we're not having staff run around all the time. But then the last paragraph on chapters, on, on page seven, letter H, then if it leads to the public acts request, is that tied, right? So if we vote on something that says if it takes more than two hours, has to come to council, are we also forcing the public act request to come back to council since they're kind of in the same?
No.
No? I've never seen that. Councilmember Robinson. I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, councilmember Robinson.
So I, I actually had some questions also about the committees and what's the flow of, of requests and everything from committees? I think, I mean, I've had some committee chairs be very upset if something comes to council before it comes to the committee, and they believe that things should come, that, that, that are pertinent to that committee should come to the committee before it comes to council. And, and then you were, you were saying that, that, that they're advising staff, and I've heard that committees are meant to advise the city council.
Sorry, you meant commissions?
Commissions, commissions. And sometimes they're committees too, like there's, there's committees, there's task force, there's different, all these things. And so I, I believe that there's a need for clarity on what's the order of operations with those things. And there isn't a lack of clarity of whether or not what's happening in a committee or commission or task force is in alignment with city council or whether it should be or other, this is a different arm of governance that, you know, kind of should come before council, you know? And I've, I've heard all these different things at the, you know, we're all assigned to nine different committees that we're, you know, meant to, you know, support. And, and you hear a lot of different things at those different committees, task force and whatnot. So I just wanted to bring that up because I feel like that is an issue, especially for people who are kind of volunteering their time to serve on those committees. If there's a lack of clarity on what their role is and who it is that they're advising, it, it makes it difficult.
And if, Henry, if I may, also, some of the, the commissions have bylaws and others, maybe the bylaws haven't been updated in a while. So that's another opportunity area.
Yeah, I, I think the city manager is correct in the viability of various committees and, and commissions. You know, it's only as good as the people on it. And sometimes it's hard to find people who have the commitment and actually have the understanding of, of what, what the committee should be doing. I know, for instance, the library commission, when, when the library, library commission was, was created, it was created to be a watchdog on how the library was run. And eventually, with different people coming on, it, it started becoming more of a, more of a friends of the library meeting and less on, on watchdog. And then they were wanting to change the, the bylaws to reflect that, you know? But I, I think that the communication also falls on the council member whose responsibility it is to be a liaison. I think it's unfortunate that it says may or may not attend meetings. I think if you're a liaison, you should attend all the meetings. And I, at the next one, I'm going to change the wording so that it says, will attend meetings as opposed to may or may not. Because that communication of what the committees are doing and what the city council is doing happens between the liaison and that commission. So, so, you know, if you don't show up every meeting, that communication is, is not there.
You're not going to put every meeting, right? Regularly attend. Not all of you attend.
Shall attend.
Regularly attend.
I'm just going to say shall attend.
So I think you might have a little problem with council members, you know, who only get, some of us, you know, are working and we only get sixteen thousand five hundred a year. And if you want, and we're already spending, you know, many of us, you know, I mean, the mayor doesn't get a whole lot either, and I know you spend a huge amount of time. But it's like to be able to, you know, maybe something like go to the meetings and at least give a council report or something, but not to, if you stay for all the liaison meetings that you have, and, you know, then you still are trying to move special items that you are prioritizing, that you're working on, forward as well as all the council meetings, and plus you have to work, it becomes a problem, you know? So I would say a little more flexibility. I would ask the mayor to consider that. And then I also would like to clarify that we need to figure out what, I, I heard what councilmember Robinson said, and I agree, that we have to determine what a reasonable amount of time, and this is like outside of a council meeting. This is what I do, and, you know, others can do it their way. But if I ask a staff to do something or can get me some information, if I realize in my head, oh my goodness, this might take them a long time, I might say, and I'm not sure, I might say to the city manager, and I have said this to her, do you think this will take a very long time or do you think I should put it on the council agenda? And sometimes she has said, well, I think you should put it on the council agenda and have your, you know, find out if the council majority is wanting to go along with it. And I always do it that way, but rather than to just assume that staff, it's a problem for all of us if one or two or three council members take up, let's say, eight hours outside of a council meeting, a week of staff's time, and then another council member comes up and says, hey, I want, I would like this information that maybe only takes an hour, and I've been told this in the past, well, council member is working on this council member's items and, you know, I don't know when they're going to get done with that, and then we'll try and get to yours. And it just doesn't seem fair. You know, I think if we want them to spend a, a long time on something, and I had asked the city manager, what did you think was a reasonable time? And she said an hour. Now, I don't know if the council believes that's, that's reasonable or not, but I don't think we should have, it's not democratic if one council member or two or three monopolize staff's times. That's all.
Councilmember Willis.
Yeah, similarly to what the vice mayor said, like, I agree with the sentiment of the mayor one hundred percent about being assigned to committees and needing to attend. And I would push back and automatically vote no on that language because outside of those committees, I have work, caretaker, and my work has several additional meetings that I'm responsible to that conflict with when those committee times happen. So it becomes that long-term conversation on if we're going to put more responsibilities on council members to handle these things with care, then we need to make sure that they're able to self-sustain themselves without having a whole other job on top of that just to pay the bills.
I'd like to say that I believe city government was arranged to fail in that we elect people part-time to do full-time jobs, and we give them part-time pay to do full-time jobs. Being a council member is a twenty-four seven job if you're doing it right. And I know that everyone on this council is doing a twenty-four seven job. I see many of them at events, which is. I see many of them at events, which is important if you want to be part of the community. I see a lot of them going to conferences, and to special meetings, and to community meetings, because it's essential if you want to be a good council member, and the same is true for the mayor's job, you know, it's a 24/7 job plus with a part-time pay. It's more than the council members, but still, it's inadequate for doing the jobs that all of us do. So I would counter with people signing up for things that they know they can do, and then just figuring out how to take care of the rest, you know, but I don't believe that we should be signing up for things that we know are not within our capabilities, you know, we've had people who kept saying, yes, I can do it, yes, I can do it, knowing full well that they couldn't, they just couldn't say, no, I can't, and I think we need to recognize our limits and have the ability to say, that's my limit, I can't do more than what I'm doing.
Well, and the environment has to be safe to say that.
Correct.
For people to be candid and forthright. I am quite accustomed to stepping out of my role, and I do not plan to change that at the moment. You made the comment that cities are really designed to fail, because we have all these part-time positions, and people trying to keep it over their heads. They were not designed to fail. I will say what I think, they were designed to be governed by fairly well-to-do white men. Yes.
In regards to the commissions, I'll just say, they could also be towards later in the day, for those of us that do work, so we don't have to, and you work, oh, figuring out a balance there, I think, but working with our, within our commissions, I recently had a conversation with one commission to see if they could be moved, because also it was a request from the commissioners, because they also work, so it's their volunteer time, and giving to the city on that, so there's a balance there. In regards to the time, maybe also defining that each item might require a different type of time, so if it's day-to-day actions that we need the staff to work on, like, can you please go clear out a pothole in my district, because it's, there's a car just fell into it, that might require more than two hours, does that require coming back in? Or a brand-new item, like, I want to know what it will take to build the next stadium in Richmond, that's way outside of our goals, so that comes to cancel, but if it's part of a goal already, and we have several goals, so does that also require, since we already voted on a goal, if it's part of a goal, do we need to come back and say, hey, we've already said it's part of a goal, do I really need to bring it back? And maybe each one of them still has a different bucket. So just putting it out there that we might want to bucket it all of these things.
Vice mayor and Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to say, I, the example you gave was a perfect example of things that I'm sure we all do, we say, hey, there's an issue here on Carlson Avenue, there's an issue here on whatever street, there's some dumb illegal dumping, I mean, it might take longer to institute the, or implement the task, but to give the direction, or to give the complaint to the staff is just, you know, is not something that I think we should feel at all reticent to do, because, you know, it just takes a few minutes for staff to respond, and they want to, I believe, our staff wants to adhere to the complaints of the citizens, so I personally don't think when it's responding, hey, there's abandoned cars on my block, you know, whatever, but I also want to, well, I forgot the other point I was going to make, so I'll let it go.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, this is asking for technical assistance to develop reports, initial staff, so it's basically referring to information, and asking staff to provide information is not, it's not directing staff to do something, so I think we need to be clear about our role as council members, and the person who is in charge, and the person who should know everything that's going on in the city is the city manager.
That's right.
So the city manager should know what sorts of things council members need to provide, but at the same time, there are sometimes informational questions that don't really require anything but an answer, and, you know, I think those sorts of things really can take place without taking up the city manager's time, because she has so many other important things to do.
Absolutely, and I think that's well-understood by the staff, quite frankly, I've worked with them over a long period of time. If it's something that, you know, there is a quick response, you're asking for a copy of a report, you just want something that we presented two years ago, they can pull it and give it, you're requesting something that requires two paragraphs, it's not to be published, it's sending you an email, so we don't have to worry about all the correct commas and periods, and that's different, and I think the staff understands that, and I think the staff tries to respond to that. One of the things we're going to get to in a minute, maybe, though, is some of the feedback we got, you know, around our communications, so, but I saw Bana, and then I saw Zapata, and the vice mayor, in that order, but you have to remember the order.
Thank you, I'm still interested to know how we change the rules and procedures, I have some suggestions, I believe they're very important, and I think if it takes a committee to form and do it, I suggest we get started on that, or should I bring him to the city council as suggestions, I don't know how to go about it.
Well, I think that for tonight, remember, you may suggest lots of things, you just may not vote on any of it, so if there are things that come to your mind, that you think that in a review that this needs to be looked at, call it out, we'll record it, you can't vote on it.
I'm not asking for action, I'm asking for information, how to go about it, I haven't received the answer yet.
Well, we've got, no, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, good.
But I'm saying, when we get there, but right now, and some of you have made comments, continue to make those observations, as we go through these, well, I think this needs further clarification, I think maybe we need to get rid of that, we're going to record all of that, and then we'll talk about the next step, or where that goes, and discuss process.
Do I get to share my suggestions tonight, or no?
Absolutely, no, absolutely, no.
Okay, let me know when I.
You know, I had a teacher who's, I'm not standing here to improve my health, we need your suggestions, councilmember Willis. Well, wait a minute, what was the order?
It was.
You have to remember your own order. Councilmember Zapata.
My question is for the city manager, sorry.
I was, if I may, so, Henry, I'm confused, did you want councilmember Bana at this juncture to indicate what her specific suggestions are, or at what point?
No, 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 because we're going to come to that. See, some of them have been calling them out, vice mayor's done an excellent job of saying.
So we're going to note them, and then we'll come back to the city council with recommendations, myself, Shannon, and Pam, after the meeting this evening, will confer and provide recommendations to the council for consideration.
No, we'd definitely like to share them at some point, please give me time.
We aren't leaving, nobody's leaving until you've done that.
Thank you.
Nobody's leaving until everybody's done that. Otherwise, I need to sit down, because I told you, I'm not standing up here to improve my health.
Someone give him a chair.
Would you like my chair?
My question is for the city manager, you get a lot of requests, I'm assuming, from all seven of us, what is the best process that works for you and staff when requests come in from city council members? Should we just email the first staff member we see, the staff member we think should do it?
Well, if I may use you as an example, councilmember Zapata, my experience with you, if I may, is that usually you will email me directly and ask me the question, or you copy me if you're emailing a staff person to ask the question, and I feel like that's really helpful, and generally, my observation is you're asking questions, or you're reporting something in the built environment. I think the distinction is, is if someone's asking about a policy or a program, or developing a new policy or program, that takes more time than just, say, for example, if we're reporting something to Daniel Chavaria, or his two deputies in the built environment, and so I think it's nuanced, and it depends on the issue. I've researched what other cities do, and some cities have a system, and so right now IT is working to acquire a system that would enable us to track and monitor them, the inquiries, right now it's all manual, and Lilia helps track and monitor them, but the inquiries are so robust, I have a separate folder for each council member, that they're so robust that I generally just try to respond to them as they come in when I have time, and if I don't know the answer, or I think the staff may have a more technical answer, then I'll ask staff to reply and to copy me, so then I know that it's been addressed.
So in summary, the best processes, email you, and if need be, maybe CC staff, but.
Right, if you know who it is, like, so for example, like, let's talk about cross, let's use crosswalks as an example, right, like, I, before you had asked for an inquiry regarding painting the crosswalk, I asked Public Works to try to re-stripe all the crosswalks adjacent to schools prior to school starting, or soon thereafter, because I think it's important that residents see that we're thoughtful about the built environment, especially adjacent to schools, and so then you had followed up with a similar request about that, and we were able to get it done. I don't think that doesn't take city council action, because it's paint, and it's something we have a signs and lines team, and I asked staff to do all of them citywide, and so to me, that's different than if, say, there's a question about community crisis response, and we're trying to figure that out, and council has now given a specific direction, so we're coming back on the 28th, and we're going to make a whole presentation to the city council, LaShonda and Sam Vaughn, on November 28th to provide an update. So programmatic things that are much more detailed, I think necessitated all of the council to be included in policy things, versus something in the built environment that's simple, like striping or fixing potholes, I think those are things that we can quickly handle internally. That's how I would distinguish them.
But email you first, not go directly.
Or put them in the app.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Because residents can put things in the app, too.
So I think I was next, I just want to state that, give a little background again on these liaison positions, so when I first became a council member in 2005, there were like virtually no liaison positions, and there were nine council members, and then a couple were included, and then each year, another, and now we have a whole slew of liaison positions, and we only, and the council shrunk to seven council members, so it's really hard, you know, I love being a liaison to some of my commissions, to all of my commissions, and I always try and go every meeting, or as often as I can, occasionally I can't make it, something else came up, like, you know, that I, like, I have a recycle more special meeting this Thursday night, so I can't do the library commission, that just happened, but the issue of maybe just going to give, I sometimes at the commission on aging, just stay for giving a council report and ask if they have any questions, but I don't think the whole meetings, if we have seven or eight liaison positions, really makes sense, it's not practical, so that's all I wanted to put out there.
Councilmember Robinson.
So I'm just going to underscore again, that I feel like there's a question of effectiveness that, of these commissions and committees that I have, I feel like sometimes the work that's being done there is either not supported, is not aligned with what's happening in the city council, or it's like siloed, and people don't know what each other are doing, and then the people who are sitting in the commissions and committees don't know how to move any of the things they're trying to move forward, and it just feels like a lot of resources going to something, and not in all cases, but in some cases, that are just not functioning very well, and I hear what you're saying about coming and, you know, just give your report and then kind of leave, but I do stay for my whole commission meetings, or committee meetings, and sometimes I'm just listening, but I just, I feel like, I feel like there's a lot of room that we need to just kind of reconsider how these commissions and committees are running.
Can I give one?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I was just going to say, the, I always am in email contact with the commissioners on a lot of things, and I often hold one-on-ones with them, I just had a meeting with the, with the library commissioner this past week, or this past, earlier this week, yesterday, I guess, and so, and I do understand what you're saying, one of the things that I've always done is, if, like, for example, this happens at the Human Rights Commission a lot, if they create a resolution on something, then they recommend that resolution to the council, and it's up to the council liaison to move that resolution to the council agenda, and I'm often bringing, I come out of every commission meeting with a set of tasks, so it's not like that, it's not, that they're not doing anything in terms of connecting with me, at least the commissions I'm on, because I do help them, I mean, I have an issue now about the commission on aging, that I'll have to talk with the city clerk about changing their ordinance, so what I'm saying is there are ways the liaison can help, and it doesn't necessarily mean staying for the whole meeting, but I understand that there's likely other issues that you've come across.
No, I just need to follow up, and just say that, yes, that's exactly what I'm doing at my commission meetings.
Yes, yes.
I'm doing things like, oh, if you guys want to advise the city council, you should probably make a resolution, you know, but they don't know that, you know, and I think that, you know, some of the commissions that I'm on, just, they don't know, they don't, they don't know, and so, yes, I'm playing that role, and so, and what I heard was, like, if I only came and brought the news from the city council to the commission, and not stayed to help facilitate what they're trying to do, I think that some of the ones that I'm, you know, I think that there would be a lot of lack of knowledge of how to move things.
Let's see, it's the mayor, and then?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis, the mayor was next.
Yeah, I want to acknowledge and agree with what the vice mayor and the council members said, and what I'm hearing is that now is a time to reevaluate our commissions, to see how effective they are, and to see how they need to be readjusted in order to become effective, so that's a lot of work ahead of us.
And that's a matter you have to take up in one of your council meetings, councilmember Willis.
Yeah, going back to a previous conversation, just to give you a partial answer, councilmember Bana, because I know I've done this a couple of times, to change our rules regarding removing agenda items from consent calendars for different reasons, and what I did is I just worked with staff and put something on the agenda, had a discussion, and then we voted it up or down from there, and in that discussion, I laid out the specific reasons why the rule change needed to happen, and that reasons why the two times I did it was because of the previous mayor and Mark Wasberg, so those would inform all of our decisions to change the rules regarding how you pull consent calendar items on and off, and the process to go about it. So I just agendized it and just had an idea on the suggestions, like I know you're going to share later on, on, this is what I'm suggesting, and here's why, let's discuss it at council.
Thank you.
All right, with that, can we push through these remaining slides? Oh, Mr. Mayor, oh, you move it, move it, okay.
Let's move.
Let's move through the others. Call to order, you know about all of that. The mayor chairs in his absence, the vice mayor, but did you know what happens if neither of them is present?
Most senior.
The most continuous.
Yes.
It says most senior council member, continuous.
Is that what it says?
It says continuous, it has to be consecutive, so if you have a council member who's been on for 12 years, and that council member served six years and six years, but you have another one who's only been on for seven, but they're consecutive, that person chairs. I thought that was interesting. Okay, so call that out in your rules. Many bodies say that those who are present then appoint a temporary chair, and that's the end of it. Open forum, you're well-versed on all of that. What's after that one? Flip these pages. Submission of agenda, there was discussion about that. The placement of any item on the regular or special meeting agenda shall be limited to the mayor or any member of the city council, the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk. To place an item on the agenda, a member of the council must submit the item to the city council staff liaison, or to the city clerk, in the absence of the council liaison, no later than 12 noon on Wednesday, one week prior to the Tuesday regular meeting. no later than 12 noon on Wednesday, one week prior to the Tuesday regular meeting. Does everybody understand that, and have we been doing it? Right? Everybody's got it? Next slide. Oh, comment?
Just being devil's advocate.
Yes.
Looking back at the city manager, I know this is what's written, what works best in terms of process? If I give you this big old agenda item on the Wednesday before the Tuesday, how happy will you be in this count from one to 100? And if I gave it to you a month before, how happier would that make you? So looking at process, best case scenario, worst case scenario, and sometimes it's like, hey, this is an emergency, I got to put it in, or urgent, if you can help us lead, so that we could all work on a better process.
Generally, if we had at least two weeks, that would be helpful, because most items, as I mentioned earlier, at least for myself, and I think most department heads, we probably spend two-thirds of our time putting together agenda packet items, preparing for city council meetings, and attending the actual meeting. So if we get a meeting, an item on Wednesday, and we're not privy to it, then I have to try to get Shannon or James to, or Dave, whomever's available, to help review it, if we can, ahead of time. And usually, if it just comes on that Wednesday, it doesn't have adequate city attorney office review, and it doesn't have adequate financial impact. And so it's, on several items where we've collaborated with the council members, that happens a lot with, with council, so far this year, I think it's been more acceptable, and we've been able to make more progress on the policy matters, when staff has given a heads up, and we're able to collaborate with the council members to offer suggestions to their items, to move them forward in a more expeditious manner. So I would say at a, at a minimum two weeks. In Concord, for example, and that's why I included it in the packet, when I talked to Valerie, the city manager there, their rule is actually at the end of the meeting. If council members want to put something on, they make a motion, and then they have to get a second and a majority vote for it to be subsequently agendized. So that's another option. But just to let you all know what the spectrum is, and they have five council members.
I'd like to say that the type of agenda item also determines the timeline. For instance, if you're going to do an ordinance, that should be months and months ahead of time, because it has to go through legal, and there has to be a lot of research done on that. And then there's a lot of back and forth in terms of wordsmithing, to make sure that after all the changes, it still reflects the intent of the agenda item.
Including community engagement, in some instances.
I'm sorry?
I say including community engagement around some of these ordinances.
Yes, yes, of course, yes.
Okay. Next slide. The consent calendar. The mayor and any member of the council, the city manager, the city attorney, the city clerk, may recommend items for the consent calendar. All items on a consent calendar appear on the agenda with the recommendation as to action taken by the council. All items placed on the consent calendar that have been approved, and we had the standing committee, you don't have those anymore, shall appear together on the agenda with the recommendation and a vote, we don't have a standing committee. Upon the motion of any member of the council, all items placed on a consent calendar will be acted upon together, and you have been doing that. Next slide. Remove items from the consent calendar.
Henry?
Yes.
Sorry, the piece that was missing in here, and I don't remember which page it was on, but it says that if an item gets removed, it goes to the end of the agenda.
I think we're going to get to that. That's the next slide, isn't it?
Oh, that's the next slide, all right, never mind. There was a page two to it, thank you, never mind, thank you.
Oh, I guessed at that, I wasn't sure. I knew, I knew it was in there somewhere.
Good guess.
I put it in there.
All right.
All right. Okay, to remove items. Procedures for removing items. Members of the public who request to remove an item from the consent calendar must first discuss the item with a staff member. Phone, email, text. State the name of the staff member when requesting removal of the item from the consent calendar. Any member of the city council who would like to remove an item from the consent calendar must notify the appropriate staff person and the city clerk's office prior to the meeting. That's what the council is required to do. Although members of the city council are encouraged to ask questions and share concerns with staff ahead of the meeting, they are not required to do so. And we had extensive comments from the vice mayor about this, an example of what happened in this.
I just want to say that, you know, this, the policy for, and I brought this amendment that put this in there, because it was like, you always have to, as a city council member, talk with staff before pulling an item, and I thought, well, that was a little bit too laborious, maybe, you know, as council members, we have a right for discussion, so, if, but I understand also that staff needs to have a heads up, if you will, so I kind of said, well, although the public needs to have a back and forth, because sometimes staff can, you know, tell, answer their questions, and they say, oh, now, now I don't have to remove it. But for council members, you just have to notify the staff member. However, and it says, we're encouraged to ask questions and share concerns with staff ahead of the meeting, however, if we are asking a question, and if we do put please respond in the subject line of the email, like I did on an item this past week, and I didn't get a response, so I didn't know what the, what this department head thought about my question, about removing the item completely, or whether, you know, have it up for discussion, I just, and, you know, and as I mentioned earlier, then obviously, well, not obviously, but I learned later that it was being discussed by departmental staff from that department and social media, so that department had obviously shared it, or, you know, spread the word to department staff, and, and then a department staff came to the council meeting and yelled at the council, which I, another thing I don't think is appropriate. So I have some concerns.
That was just for the record, that was not a member of the management leadership team.
It was not a member of the management leadership who yelled at the council, but the management leadership should have responded to me, so I could be prepared. I didn't know whether it was going to be removed or not, because sometimes staff will remove an item altogether from the agenda, if they, because, you know, community members have extensive questions, well, let's hold off on this, we'll answer the questions, we'll bring it back at the next meeting. Okay, so that didn't happen this time. I don't want to make a big thing, too big of a thing out of this, because it was one instance, but I did want to put it out there. So it's known that, that if you're just asking a question, I think it should be answered, you know? That's it.
Now, just for clarity, this is all before the council meeting?
Yes.
Is there anything in your rules that would restrict a council member for requesting that an item be removed from the consent calendar, and with the consent of the council, it's removed?
Unless, not unless you, I know Councilmember Robinson wanted to remove a couple more items, a couple items on the last meeting, and the mayor, and I think he rightly, you know, told her that we have to notify, at least notify staff. Now, that wasn't always a rule, but, so, but like I said, it was more laborious in the past, that the council member had to discuss it, so we could change that.
But if there is, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
If you don't mind, I think I was wrong in ruling that Councilmember Robinson could not take those off, because it says, although members of the city council are encouraged to ask questions and to share concerns with staff ahead of the meeting, they are not required to do so. So if they're not required to do that, then they should be able to pull the items.
No, it says, I put, I put this amendment on, it says, the sentence before that is any member of the city council who would like to remove an item from the, must notify the appropriate staff person.
I stand corrected.
So that's, but, you know, anything can be changed.
Okay.
But then, so it's, so unclear. A council member is not even aware until hours before, in between the closed session and the meeting, that there is an item on the consent calendar, that the council member is very concerned about, and is respectfully requesting of the council and of the staff, that the item be removed and returned to the next meeting. You think your rules would prohibit that, if the council consented?
It would need the mayor to hold it over.
No, it could go up to a vote of the council.
It could go to a vote of the council, yeah.
I mean, I could, I could see that happening, that the time for all of this has passed, and Councilmember Robinson gets a message during the closed session, that she can't do anything with, and now after the closed session, before the regular meeting, she says, oh, wait a minute, I didn't know that's what this was, this stuff was in here. And explaining that to the council, a majority are, would hope your rules wouldn't preclude, and a majority is saying, oh, well, we can pull that until the next meeting.
Yes, Councilmember Bana.
Yes.
Thank you. So I have a question and a comment. My question to Gayle is, Vice Mayor McLoughlin, that the department head did not answer your question, or did not remove the item?
Did not answer my question. I was asking if that department head would remove it altogether from the agenda, and then I said, could you please let me know? If I had known, and I said, you know, otherwise I can pull it from consent calendar, but because I didn't get a response, I mean, I would have carved out, there's lots of items, as you know, coming at us on a council meeting day, and community concerns and such, and had I known that it, I just didn't know, and I would have carved out a little time to have my remarks a little more concise, or, you know, a little more organized, but I didn't get a response. So that felt, I felt disregarded, I guess. I felt kind of out, left in the dark.
So it was basically not quite, it was a request to remove, and it was an answer?
No, it was a request to ask staff what their, I was really, and I transparently shared the concerns of the community group, and I basically was saying, could you remove this to have it come back after these concerns are addressed, you know, with more analysis? But like I said, let's not get bogged down in my one example, because it's only one example.
I understand, I understand. So I think that everybody who removes an item from consent calendar, either city council members or members of the public, we should know their names and the reason why. It's very important, because when an item is removed from consent calendar, it may take an hour, two, three, so we need to know why. That, that's the basic minimum, and I remember once it was done, and we had a presentation about the whole thing, maybe that question could have been answered quickly, maybe five minutes, two minutes, 10 minutes. I did, it's, the protocol says, if it's removed, we have to go through the whole presentation. I have a strong objection to that. I mean, time is precious for everyone, for all this staff, for all members of the public, so we need to know who pulled it. City clerk, I've asked repeatedly, I don't, I don't hear the names of the people who pull them. I think, I don't know if it's in the protocol, if not, I think it should be, and also the reason why, the question, objection, reason, I mean, people have the right to know.
That's for those who are asking prior to the meeting to have an item removed. I'm not getting clarity on something.
Anytime, anytime that an item is removed.
The agenda has been published.
I'm sorry?
Where the agenda has been published, you're in the meeting, a council member, there's a motion to approve the consent calendar, and a council member says that I would like to pull item number 6H, the rest of the consent, and it goes to the end now. And then when that item comes up, the council member says, I ask that this item be pulled because I'm confused about the dates of when this program starts, because it says 1956.
That's what you imagine, but that's not how it goes.
But if that, but if that is all they are asking, that's the end of the matter. They just asked that the record be corrected.
I wish that was the way, and that's my suggestion, but we go through the whole presentation.
Well, maybe, maybe the member of the council feels that this is a more substantive issue, and shouldn't have been on the consent calendar in the first place. That, I've seen that happen lots of times. Councilmember Robinson.
Actually, it was Councilmember Suppeta, then Robinson.
Mayor, you just get three stars. I tell you guys, I'm looking right at you, and I can't keep it straight, he's looking like this, and you all these sides, but I had my hand up first.
He's got the experience already. I think we should also define what the word prior means. I think this is kind of the conversation we're having, but better definition of it, so there's no gray areas. Is it prior, do I just, as we go from closed session to open session, do I just run over to somebody and say, hey, I'm going to pull your agenda item, FYI, two minutes from now? Or does it require a day before, a couple hours before? What's prior mean, so we're all on the same page, and it's also fair to everyone, so that we're aware of it? The mayor works, the mayor and the city manager work hard at agendizing the items properly, and just for us to just pull them all, doesn't make a lot of sense. So I think if we can define the word prior, it would help the process. That's it.
So again, some background.
Actually, Robinson.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. So I think I have a couple of things. One, I do wonder if the microphone system that we have in council chambers can be used to take stack? Like, it seems like it has such a functionality. I'm wondering if we're using it, and if we're not using it, why? Why not, you know? Because it seems...
I'm sorry, what, the microphone yourself?
Yeah, the microphones in the, in the city council chambers have a thing where you can see who, who is on the mic or whatever, and it seems like it also has, I might be wrong about this, a function where somebody could indicate that they want to speak.
Oh, yeah, I had a conversation with the mayor and the staff about that.
Right, and so I just...
You do have, you do have that ability, but something has to happen to make it operational.
Yeah, so I just always wonder about that. And then, two, I feel like I want to make just a comment and just a daylight, you know, one of the most challenging things that I kind of discovered as a new council person is this process of getting an agenda, hopefully on Thursday night, usually sometime between Thursday night and Friday, that's over 1,200 pages. And, you know, we're supposed to read all that, and have questions formed by Monday, because Monday is the only day that you can ask questions, you know, with enough time, where it's reasonable that staff's going to be able to get back to you for a Tuesday meeting. Sometimes it also flows into Tuesday, and so you're rushing on Tuesday to try to get questions answered. When you have something that's really weighty, when you're trying to read through an environmental study, when you're trying to understand some of these things, you triage, right? You're, you go to the things that are going to have the most impact, most important, you read those first, maybe you don't get to some of the other things, and you might discover that some of those things you put off till last are actually really important, and then you haven't had a chance to reach out to that staff person to get the answers, to get the questions. So I just wanted to daylight that for people, that, you know, again, this is a part-time, so-called part-time position, you know? You know?
We've all had that discussion.
We're receiving a packet that we're, but we're going to be legally, we're going to be responsible for our decisions. It's over 1,000 pages, most times, that we're supposed to read between Thursday night, if we're lucky, mostly, also Friday day, and Monday, so that we can ask, you know, good questions on Monday. And we're supposed to go to all these things on the weekends, and, you know, these committee meetings, admission meetings, removing things, and I just wanted to make sure people understand that that's what we're, we're expected to do. And so for me, it, it just is, you know, not really humanly possible. We don't have a staff that can read through these things for us and advise us of what's going on in these different things. That's just us, you know? So I just want to make sure that people understand that that's the pressure that we're on, and we're doing our best to try to make good decisions around all these things. We are not staff to work on each one of these things every day, in and out, knowing all the detail, we have to pick it up like that and be able to make a good decision on it. So I just, I just want to make sure that I say that.
Well, how do we, how do we address that in a way that recognizes what you just said? I know from my own career experience, there are certain items that come before the council, and a lot of these have legal documents attached to them, and they can be very complex. My suggestion would be that, well, of course, staff will be taking this back, when, deciding when those items go to the council, to the extent possible, to send those out well in advance of the council meeting. And conferring with the city attorney, maybe go out well in advance and separate from the agenda, and then repeat it again with the agenda, to give the council members adequate time to review it, knowing that it's, it's hundreds of pages.
And for some things, that does happen, like the staff reach out to us instead of meetings, and we can get, like, conversation, everything, but not for everything. And I, and finally, I just wanted to make a comment about one of the items that I was trying to pull, so people can see what happened. It was one of those occasions where I didn't get to review that one ahead of time. that one ahead of time. But for me, it was a really important issue, is this issue of mandatory overtime. And how do we bring it to an end in 18 months, so that our police officers are not working so many days in a row that they can't function and they're upset, which to me is really dangerous. And I felt like the report that we voted on and approved did not have a clear pathway to how we end that. And we were just kind of like, okay, on. And I felt like that was dis, that was, that was just, it was just unfortunate that I didn't get enough time to be able to bring that issue up, because I felt like it's affecting the life of so many people who we were, who we depend on, and have a very dangerous job. And, and, and it's too bad that because there wasn't enough time to get to it, that it just, like, okay, it's fine. They're fine, you know?
Madam Vice Mayor.
Um, yeah, I, I agree with what Councilmember Robinson said, everything. And I, I wanted to give a little bit of a background to Councilmember Zapata's question, which I think ties in here as well with what Doria said. It's, the reas, how long is prior to the meeting? Well, originally, we used to have, the staff people had to be in the chambers, like, I think it was 5:30 onward, because the public, up until the council meeting, had the time to talk to staff and then pull an item. So that was the purpose of having prior to the council meeting for the public. Now, for the council, it was kind of the same thing. And that's when I said, no, no, we shouldn't have to have this back and forth, but maybe we should go to where it was initially. Council members didn't have to, and I can see still having it for the public. But because they have questions that could be answered, but sometimes council members want to discuss it, and for good reasons, like Councilmember Robinson just suggested, and are just addressed. And so why not just say council members could pull items on the spot? Staff will be, this is a question for the city manager. Are staff in the council chambers or in the vicinity of the civic center for any item they have on consent calendar? Are they always there?
Currently, no, not because, because people are allowed to participate via Zoom, if they're staff. And I, I think staff shares the council member sentiment, like, on both sides, that because our, we can only procure items up to $10,000. In most cities, it's much larger. But I'm fine with the $10,000, because it increases transparency for what staff is doing. It just means the volume of items is, is enormous. And so we are processing all those contracts. And we're administering all those contracts, and we're putting together all those staff reports. And it takes an inordinate amount of time. And so I, I, I think we want to do whatever we can, anytime there's a question, or if something, if the council isn't able to pull an item, but they have a suggestion or an idea, or they think the staff report lacks something. It would, to me, it would be totally appropriate, even if the item doesn't get pulled, if a council member has an idea or a suggestion or wants clarification. There's nothing that, you know, I think it would be totally appropriate to just send an email to myself and the staff person and ask the clarifying question, or ask if, you know, when they come back next year or in six months to provide an update, will they please consider including the following information? And we'd be happy to do that. Because we, our intention as staff is, we want the meetings to, to be helpful to you all. We want to get out at a reasonable time. And we want us, we want you and staff want to also have a good experience as well as the community. So I think we're very much on the same page in terms of desired outcomes.
Good. Councilmember Willis.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think in 2017, 2018, we did have a similar discussion on, like, can these agenda packets be released earlier in the week? And whenever we, because, you know, community members were mad about that, too, because it's like, this agenda's posted up, I care about this item, and I don't have enough time to really read through it. And I think it's still worthwhile conversation having, I just haven't had any solutions for. But I think where we ended up finding that impasse was the deadline we have as council members and staff to submit items, and the internal team that does the legal analysis, and then making sure that we post it up, at least, I think it's, what, 72 hours? Or four days prior? Like, we never were able to figure out, like, how do we address that impasse on when we submit items versus when they do the illegal analysis and the requirements to get it out within a certain amount of time? I definitely would like an agenda, like, sooner than the three-day period, because it is a lot to go through. And, yeah, I don't want to hit up staff over the weekends with questions, and Monday is, you know, setting realistic expectations on how many questions are actually gonna get answered. So I think it's a worthwhile discussion on how we fix that. But those were like the three main things that made it so complicated to come out with the outcome that worked better for everybody. So we could figure out those three main things, I think we might be able to do something better. But I remember that being a conversation we had in, like, 2017 and 2018 about can we get the agenda sooner?
Councilmember Zapata.
Something that I noticed, some of the agendas that we've had, they go from an action item to consent calendar after it's been moved from one meeting to the other. So we pay close attention, some of these items that, that we don't have time to discuss, they say, okay, we're moving it to the next meeting. That item, or that next agenda item, we move it to the next meeting. And then it appears on the consent calendar, and then we try to pull it. So maybe it's prioritizing figuring out if we're going to move it to the next meeting, it doesn't go to consent calendar, so we don't have to pull it. Or do we say, we're moving it to the next agenda, just put it under consent calendar? But some of these agenda items were at once an actionable item that went under consent calendar later on. So figuring out a process for that. I don't know how it just sticks in, under consent calendar or not.
Madam Vice Mayor.
I, I believe in the rules. It says that anything that we have not gotten to, even if it was an item that is a pulled consent calendar item, which we sometimes don't get to, should be heard at the, should be heard at the beginning of the, you know, agenda, like, in new business. So I don't think that always happens, though. And I do think it should.
Yeah, I think for several items that have been moved on, and I think it might be because if we're not prioritizing it, and we're thinking that's at the bottom of the list anyways, staff might just say, well, let's just put it under consent, so we can make sure that we move some of these forward. Figuring out the root cause of it might help us determine, so that way we don't have to go back and re-pull it.
Mr. Mayor.
If I'm not mistaken, second readings generally go to the consent calendar, because they've already been approved.
That's your process, yes.
If it's an ordinance.
Is that your process?
Yeah, yeah. So, but, uh, items that have been pulled, you know, should remain pulled, because they were pulled, because discussion was required.
Right.
Yeah, so.
I want to go back to a comment that the city manager made, because I think I heard this right. Are a lot of items on the consent calendar are contracts that are over $10,000?
Yes, that's what most of the items are, that are on consent calendar.
You should get rid of that.
No, no, that's, it's fine. It would require a charter amendment. And I think for, I think right now, we're trying...
Your charter still has $10,000?
Yes, but, but right now, while we're rebuilding...
That should be on the consent calendar, next time you put the charter in. I don't think there's a city, I know cities that have less than 10,000 people, and the limit for the city manager is $50,000. Many of them have a process where then they report back, you know, quarterly.
But Henry, I think while we're in the state audit process...
I'm gonna leave you in your...
Henry, if I may, while we're in the state audit process, and we're trying to rebuild trust with the community, I think it's important to be transparent. So then the public and the council knows exactly what we're doing. I, I mean, it's laborious, yes, but while we're rebuilding trust, which is one of the boxes in our PowerPoint, I think it's helpful for now. And, you know, in the future, if the council wants to consider a charter amendment, I would defer to them.
You, you, you keep your process, and may the gods be with you. You cannot find a single city anywhere in California that has those kind of limits. Okay, I can't help you on that one. Keep going where you're going. All right, next item. Keep it rolling.
Yes. Councilmember Robinson has one more comment.
I just wanna make one quick comment to just say that I did speak to Chief French after that whole thing, and I worked it all out, and we were able to talk. I wish I had time to talk to her ahead of time. So I was able to understand what was going on, and what was not, what was not included in the papers that we got that is happening. And so I was able to resolve things, and we could have done that if we had a discussion. But, you know, I just wanted to say that, so I didn't, like, just bring this up and be upset. I'm not mad about it. I really appreciate the work that Chief French is doing, and I wanted to say that.
Thank you very much. And we are going to eventually, one day, get to effective communications, because the word I'm gonna leave you with is you can't beat it. You can't beat effective, timely communications. Respond quickly, to the extent that you can. That's for the council, that's for the staff, that's for everybody. They may not like the answer you give them, but don't let them say you didn't respond. Respond. Ask the press about me. I respond to all their stuff. Half the time, they don't want to hear it, but I tell them anyway. All right, the next one is committee review. We don't have that, right? All right, what's the next one?
Well, we do and we don't, I believe. Because some of, what the paragraph here says...
Well, you do have committee, kind of subcommittee, yeah.
All right, what the paragraph says is if, that we can, after further review or consideration, the city council may refer to a standing committee or to a full city council study session. So one of the standing committees, I don't know if it's also a commission. Are we looking at a commission? So we could say, oh, that we're talking about trees, so maybe we give this over to the tree commission, instead of the city council debating about trees.
But I think this city council standing committee refers to something else that you don't have. I think that goes back to when you had maybe a finance committee, you may have had a...
A public safety committee.
Public safety committee, et cetera. That's what, that standing committee, I think, refers to.
Is that what that referred?
It's a standing committee of the council, which you no longer have.
Okay.
You had several of them, when there were nine members on the council. Three of them, Vice Mayor says, yeah. Okay. Interruptions. You know all about that. If a member while speaking is called to order, should be, you know, we just need to respect each other's time to speak. No interruptions. Privilege of closing debate. The council member moving the adoption of an ordinance or resolution should have the privilege of closing the debate. I don't know if you've been doing that. When a motion to call a question is passed, somebody's called for their motion, it's passed. Generally, under Roberts' Rules of Order, that's no longer debatable, and doesn't appear to be here. But the council member moving the adoption should have three minutes to conclude the debate. But what that says to me is, it's only that council member. You don't, once that motion is passed, you call for the question. That's it. But you have provided that the mover of the motion shall have three additional. Have you been doing that?
We have not. This is something that we have ignored. And if it pleases the council, we won't.
And, and I would just say that that was, came about, I know it says when a motion to call a question is passed. So the council member who, if it was a council item, and the council member who brought the item to the council usually has the privilege of making the motion. We don't always do it that way either, and it's not a big thing. But, you know, anybody will jump in. I move the item. And, but we used to do it where the person who brought the item would have the right. And if another council member was ready for a motion, they would say, I would like to ask, you know, Councilmember X to please make a motion. I think we're ready for it now. But they would kind of defer to the council member who brought the item. And then that three minutes would be their privilege as well.
They're closed.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't think it's, this is another thing that isn't clear, clear in its writing. But it could stand as is, you know, when a motion, because there'll be staff items that somebody will make a motion on. And that council member who makes the motion would have three minutes to conclude the, the debate, if that's what we all want.
Generally, especially under Roberts' Rules of Order, I didn't look at Rosenberg's. A motion...
Excuse me, if I may. This refers to a call to question, which means a call to vote.
That's where I'm going.
Right, okay.
When there is a call under Roberts' Rules of Order, the person then has called the question. You say, I called the question. That generally is not debatable.
No debate.
You have to vote on whatever's on the floor. You have made a slight exception to that in here, by allowing the mover to have the final three minutes. But nobody else gets to speak, and then you vote.
But, but I don't think that's what it was meant for. Because in another part of our rules, it might be through Rosenberg's rules, it does say that, that a call the question, which means, I'm tired of debating this, let's, let's vote. Then there is no debate. So this contradicts that. I think what this was meant to say, when a motion, when a motion is ready to be passed, the council member moving adoption, not when a motion to call a question. I think that's unclear. And I, I would, I wouldn't think we should contradict, I mean, unless the council wants to.
Well, you aren't, so, actually, we are reading this, you aren't necessarily contradicting it, but you're expanding it. You're making it more flexible, and maybe make it more flexible than you really intend. Because generally, once the question is called, you vote it up or down. And it's not debatable.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
All right.
Mayor, Councilmembers Zapata and Willis.
I don't know if this is the track you were gonna go on. I know I got, there are members from the public, from my district, who did let me know that they were gonna be here today, and I see that at 6:30. I was wondering if it'd be okay to go to public comment, because we normally don't necessarily have public comment here. And I always feel bad waiting for members of the public to wait till after our discussion for them to get public comments. So I was wondering if you, the mayor, my colleagues, would be amenable to switching to public comment, then continuing this discussion afterwards.
I will take that motion and second it. Are we, all those in favor of having public comment at this time, raise your hand? And it looks like it's unanimous. Public comment, please.
Are there public speakers, Madam?
Yes, we have three public speakers. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes to address the council. Speakers are Alex Mazewet, Cynthia Thornton, and Yvette Williams. Alex, go ahead.
So Alex Mazewet, Building Woods resident and property owner. And thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll try to summarize. I don't know if that'll help, but I want to say that, you know, Councilwoman McLoughlin, you're not the only one who's not getting responses from the city. And so I would like to address the city manager, who's not here. Well...
She just stepped away, she's...
But just to say that my questions are very seldom answered. And sometimes my representative, Melvin Willis, who's been really wonderful, and you are wonderful, believe me, compared to what we had before. Thank you so much for all your work, everybody. I don't want to put the blame on anybody. I just want to say, to my experience, there is some malfunction or dysfunctioning in the infrastructure itself of the city. And I will, I will say a few things. Five years ago, the neighbors in Building Woods, we filed our first citizen traffic request form. It was in June 2018. So that's five years ago. That was with a petition. The school, the church, everybody signed it. We wanted, because we had major traffic issues, and they're getting worse, believe me. So the petition was signed, we sent everything, took a year, nothing was coming. So I finally, after a while, I said, okay. So I received a note from Mr., I forgot, Dane Rogers at the time, who told me, without giving any explanation, that our request had been denied. Okay, so I insisted a little bit, and finally was told that there was not enough data for that specific traffic issue. We wanted two four-way stop signs to try to regulate a little bit the, the traffic there, because really, it is really insane. So, so I'm like, no data? How come? And so he said, well, no, there's no data. So I remembered, they put, the city put, and it was a subcontractor, at the, at the, one of the intersection, they put a, a device to record some data for traffic, traffic flow. Fine. One night, it took one night, and it was...
Your time expired.
Anyways, just to say, really, I can send you all the information. Sorry about that. Anyways, just to say, really, I can send you all the information, sorry about that.
Excuse me, Ms. Mazewett, hold on. Is it okay if she continues?
Just one second, I'll send you all the information, but I think there might be some problem.
Excuse me, she wants to take Ms. Thornton's time. Is that okay?
Oh, okay, all right.
I will allow that.
Thank you, sorry about that. So, where was I? Gosh, okay, so...
You were at the device.
Yeah, the device was vandalized, but it was never replaced. So there is no data, but honestly, it's not our fault, it's not the city's fault either, of course, there are vandalizers, but it was never replaced. Also, a lot of the traffic that happens, the traffic issues are not recorded, because for many reasons, lack of information, people don't speak English very well, they don't have a good insurance, many reasons, so it doesn't go on record. So the data was never really there, but it's not my fault, it's not Melvin Willis' fault, it's nobody's fault, but five years later, and we filed three forms, three forms, three petitions, nothing happened. We had, and thank you for the Public Board Director, he organized the meeting to, no, it was in September, early September, with Melvin Willis as well, wonderful. We had two of the city engineers at that meeting, were a few people, the people who arrived at 6:00 PM, the meeting was at 6:00 PM, here at the city, so we could get in. But the people, some people arrived a little bit later, they were like 6:15, 6:20, and although I had been assured that someone will be there to greet them, the door was closed, nobody was there, and, and so they could not get in. So there, I think there's a problem of coordination among all the departments, and I think it's, in a way, if you're having some issues as well as city council, maybe there's also something that could be done within the infrastructure of the City of Richmond itself. All the different departments don't seem to be coordinating very well, don't seem to be talk, communicating, I'm sure they are, and I'm sure very good intentions, but I think there's a, yeah, a coordination, and, and some information is not going there, and so that's it, thank you.
Yvette Williams.
Now it's time. You haven't smoked it.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Yvette Williams, and I have the very fortunate pleasure of not only being a Richmond resident, but also being a member of the wonderful staff here at the City of Richmond. I am here to speak today because I am, I live in the Building Woods neighborhood. My parents have owned their home for 55 years. I'm a proud Richmond resident, we have lived here, we have been involved in the community, I volunteer. However, I'm very concerned about the traffic issues we experience. As you heard from my neighbor, I have the pleasure of knowing who to contact to get issues resolved, but as many of my neighbors, when I speak to them, they do not, and I don't think it should be that way. Oftentimes, I will use the E-Track system, just because I don't think I should have to use my city email address to try to have issues resolved in my community. We should all be treated equally. So with that said, I want it to be known that we are experiencing severe speeding accidents. I'm home at, in the evenings, people are coming across the 13th Street overpass, they're making illegal turns, I don't know if we can put up barriers there, but it's just always dangerous. I don't even, I have to detour my route home, just to make sure I can get home safely, and I don't think that should be the case. I live six minutes from work, I should be able to walk to work, but it's not safe. So I just would like to implore you to please take our pleas seriously, heed our concerns. It is a very serious issue. We experience traffic issues on a daily basis, whether it's double parking, parking on a sidewalk, people speeding through red lights, stop signs, or abandoned vehicles being parked. So that's what I wanted to share today, that I don't think that we should discriminate based on who you work for, I just think all our requests should be heeded.
And that was our last speaker.
Thank you. We will now continue. I would like to say one thing. At this point, we will be offering suggestions. The suggestions will be discussed and presented at the city council for, for making decisions, but until that moment, we must adhere to what we see written.
Mr. Mayor?
Until you modify the rules, I think that's absolutely correct.
Or may, may I make my comment that, for which I raised my hand before you went to public comment?
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Gartner, I want to make sure that everyone is on the same page, and I'm going to be looking at our city attorney here today. When we say, I call a question, what does that mean in the Brown Act and both in Rules and Rules?
You say, when I call a question?
When somebody says it's called a question, right, and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, because it's, calling a question is a motion, so we have to vote, because that's ending debate.
I will respond first, under Robert's Rules of Order, which I'm quite familiar with. If there is discussion going on, and Councilmember McLaughlin says, we have discussed this endlessly, Mr. Mayor, I call for the question, it's the way it's generally presented, that is not debatable, generally. And then the mayor says, the question has been called, and the clerk calls the roll. And if it passes, then that's the end of it. If it fails, you're back on the floor discussing it.
Thank you.
I don't know if you have anything that says anything contrary to that, but it's the pretty standard of Robert's Rules of Order.
No, because what I usually see is, we call the question, and then we say, okay, we're making a motion for the item, not to end debate. So calling a question is a motion in itself to end debate.
It can be...
Not to say, stop debating, I make a motion that we...
That, that's not correct.
Which...
What, what you said.
That is, that's Rosenberg's Rules, and Robert's Rules. Calling a question is a motion in itself. It's saying, I called, instead of saying I call...
It's definitely a motion in itself. The question, I think you're asking, is it, is the motion then, if it passes, is the motion then that the item is done?
No, is, debate is done. Calling a question is saying...
The debate is done.
I make a motion to end debate, is what calling a question is.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Did it, you have a different...
That's accurate under Rosenberg's Rules of Order.
Yeah, that's pretty standard.
So I just want to make sure that everybody was under the same impression, because...
Well, under the same impression, but it is a confusing, it's a confusing rule, and not used that much, except in organizations, and I don't mean councils necessarily, where there's lots of debate. And so that's when you hear most people say, I'm exhausted with this. Yes.
So just for clarity's sake, who again can call a motion?
For the, anybody.
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 Anybody at any point can just say, call a question.
Yeah, I call, yeah, I call a question.
Call the question.
Yeah, call a question. Call for the question. Yep, yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so reading from Rosenberg's Rules here, it says, motion to limit debate. The most common form of this motion is to say, I move the previous question, or I move the question, or I call the question, or sometimes someone simply shouts out, question? I don't know. I don't know what that's all about, but as a practical matter, when a member calls out one of these phrases, the chair can expedite matters by treating it as a request, rather than as a formal motion. The chair can simply inquire of the body, any further discussion? If no one wishes to have further discussion, then the chair can go right to the pending motion that is on the floor. However, if one person wishes to discuss the pending motion, then at that point, the chair should treat the call for the question as a formal motion, and proceed to it.
Take it, yes.
So it has to be moved. Thank you. It has to be moved, when somebody calls it, that he can, the chair can be kind of a courtesy, saying, anybody have any more discussion? But if one person says, yeah...
Exactly.
No, we have to, let's, let's make the motion to see if it's gonna, if it's gonna end debate.
Yeah. Okay. I've been in those argumentative situations where that happens, and a person says, no, I called a question.
Yeah, yeah.
Get a vote. Okay, other comments. We're now on, we talked about, suspension of the rules. It requires five. If you want to suspend your rules, it requires five votes. If there are six members present, it requires five votes. I think it requires five votes, no matter what, to suspend your rules. Okay. Addressing the council after a motion is made. When a motion is pending before the council, no person other than a council member shall address the council without first securing the permission of the mayor or meeting chair to do so. Any questions? Continuation of items. After the mayor's sole discretion, at the mayor's sole discretion, the mayor may continue any item placed on a regular meeting agenda for a period up to two weeks. The council could override that action by the mayor, and continue an item by the affirmative vote of a majority of the council. And that is from your charter. Any questions about that? Okay, now, to Councilmember Anna, and to all of you, some of you have made suggestions, raised issues or concerns, but I promise Councilmember Vanna that nobody's leaving. Does she tell us?
Taking everyone hostage.
What is, does she has on her mind?
Thank you. So, number one, I already said that the city...
Now, do I have somebody helping me record? Oh, you're recording, hold on a minute.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Can I state an item for trivia?
Yes.
Okay, so I was just noting that of the members of the senior leadership team, I think there's 17, and of those, since I've become city manager, only three of them were in their roles prior to me becoming city manager. So I thought that might be helpful context for the city council, because I, I think this, working with you, Henry, has been extraordinarily helpful in helping us all work together as a new team. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope it's been helpful, and I hope you all have the good sense to ignore the nonsense that I spew from time to time. Okay, let's see, where are we? Oh, yes, Councilmember Vanna, you're supposed to tell us what we're supposed to do.
I thought the city manager would ask which three, and there would be a prize for the right answer.
No, this is unlimited. This is unlimited. We're going to throw half of them out, but go ahead and put them up.
Thank you. So I would like to ask the city clerk to always announce who pulled item and why. I think it's very important.
Okay.
And then the answer to the why be presented, not the entire item. The other thing is, being a new council member actually has many disadvantages, but I learned during MOU negotiation that some city council members had contact with union members, and I was thinking, okay, now the union members believe that I'm not supporting them, other members who have contact with them support them, and then it's, see, it's, it's obviously undermining the process going through the legal council. So I would like it to be put in the rules and procedures that there should be no individual contact between council members and union members during the MOU negotiation. Council members can ask for presentations by the union members to the entire council, but there should not be individual contact.
I don't know that that's legal, because people have access, should have access to city council members at all times, regardless of what positions they, they have, so I don't know that that's a...
They can present, that's what I'm asking, but we shouldn't make, give them any promises regarding the negotiation, because this is going on through the training.
No, no promises, yeah, but we can't prohibit them from contacting us.
No, that's why I'm asking, there should be a presentation to the entire council, rather than individual contact.
I, I think the point you're trying to make isn't about contact, but it's about conversations.
Yes.
So it should say, no individual contact between council members and union members should, should discuss MOUs during, during discussion.
Exactly, as Mr. Mayor's...
That is a well-established...
Right.
...ground rule for negotiations. It is well-established, and the rule says, it's well-established.
Right.
Once negotiations commence, the MLT will only communicate with the designated negotiators of that union, and a union likewise will only deal with the MLT negotiating team, will not have any discussions with council members about the terms and conditions of the contract. That's a well-established ground rule.
Right, so...
Otherwise, you're working against yourself, quite honestly.
So we basically don't need to put that up there, because it's already part of the...
I don't think it is. I didn't see it in the rules and procedure. It may be a grand rule, as obvious, but I think it should be put in there, so every city council member reads it and abides by it. It's very important to follow, don't you agree?
Yes, and, and also, the, this conversation should extend to, to staff members who's, who will be affected by the MOU.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, yeah.
No, absolutely. Otherwise, honestly, you're negotiating against yourself.
Right, yeah, agree.
Thank you. Next item. So, ever since I joined the city council, I, sometimes I look through the local news to see how the City of Richmond portrayed, and guess what? What are the five most dangerous cities in California?
What is five what?
Most dangerous cities, and Richmond is always number five, or if there are 10, and then it explains that it's based on historical data, may not be valid, but the reputation of Richmond being associated with crime, we should fight that image, we should change it. One of the things we have on our agenda is always crime report. Why do we underscore this image? Why don't we fight that image? So my suggestion is, we should have activity report for our police department and fire department. Our police department has a lot of social activities, like through Family Justice Center, with human trafficking, with helping families. Every time there is a homeless encampment, number one contact is Michelle Mylum, that helps families with children who live on the streets, and she works closely with Core to find housing for them. And Michelle works for the police department. So I strongly suggest, let's change that crime report, we need to change our image of a city associated with crime, by doing social services that the police department is doing. Our police chief is African-American woman, and she's the first police chief in California, as far as I know, who's started cultural sensitivity training, starting tomorrow. There was a person killed by the police nine years ago, PD Press, there is a module about him. It's a police department that's looking into its past, training its forces to be sensitive, to avoid unreasonable, unreasonable or unnecessary use of force, and we should brag about it. We should brag about all the good things happening in our city. We, we should not be bragging about our crime reports.
If you don't mind, I would suggest that this is something that could be done administratively. It doesn't have to go...
I, I talked to the city clerk, and city clerk says it's in rules and procedures.
That what is in rules and procedures?
The title is crime report. It cannot change.
It can change.
Okay, thank you.
But before you go on, though, I, I, you startled me with your opening statement about the crime, because in the last, oh, since January at least, I wish I could, you know where I really belong, I wish Oakland had the rate that you have.
I know.
Richmond actually has done an incredible job in the last year.
Excellent job.
So you need, you need to say that, though, because it's, it's not in the data, I was looking at the...
I agree.
You have, I, I looked at one time, and I thought, this has to be a mistake. I looked at the homicide rate, it is way down in Richmond, I mean, way down. We need to celebrate that, and keep talking about that.
I totally agree, and we should emphasize on the social services that our police department provides, and the excellent job, actually, that the fire department provides, our emergency responders and public safety officers. So the last item I would like to say is, when we have ad hoc committees, I think all the members of the council should have equal share, not that certain members be members of most ad hoc committees, and some other members have less share. So I would like, I don't know if we need to put it in rules and procedures, or I should just mention it to the mayor.
What is your process? Do you, you just volunteer for that, or how, did you say, I'm interested in this?
Well, no, the mayor appoints them.
But do you have a chance to express? Is there like a, you know, okay, we've got these many, who wants to serve? And keeping in mind what Councilmember Robinson said, and Councilmember, and Vice And keeping in mind what council member Robinson said, and vice mayor McLaughlin said, and what the mayor said, I want to serve now, but do I have the time to do it? But is there a process? Is there a way that you can, that members can tell the mayor, okay, coming up, starting in January, I would, I'm interested in these committees? Is there a way to do that? Is there a process for that?
It's been by appointment so far, as far as I know.
Well, but I'm asking before the mayor makes appointments, is there a way to say, indicate to the mayor, they're coming up, I'm interested in these?
There is a process, and, and we ask staff, we ask council members who wants to be appointed. So, so, you know, depending on who raises their hands, they're chosen. Sometimes criteria such as, you know-
You found that somewhere, no?
Is this in their district? You know, if it's in their district, then, then, you know, I give them more-
More weight, though.
More weight.
Okay, well, let's, let's see how that works.
Right. And then, and then, as vice mayor McLaughlin said, I also choose people who have history with the issue so that when they step into the ad hoc, they're, they're well-grounded in what needs to be done.
Well, now, how do we handle?
New members.
Yeah, new members, that want to be, be interested in one of the ad hoc committees that vice mayor McLaughlin has been handling. Even vice mayor McLaughlin would say, phew, somebody's willing to take this on.
Yeah, well, ad hoc committees are more than one person, and so-
So there's opportunity.
And also, people can ask to create an ad hoc if they want one, and they could talk to the mayor.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you. I didn't know it was that easy.
All right. Okay, well, that's-
Last, last item.
Communication. Communication.
Is to this staff, I think this staff sometimes are just too nice to the city council members. If I was working in any place-
Now, that's coming later. That's not in your rules. That's coming later. Remember, we have, it's seven o'clock. We haven't gotten to all that stuff that all of you talked about when I talked to you. We went through this stuff pretty fast when I talked to you. You said all your comments for the second part.
Yeah, but I, I have a point to make, actually, about legalities and, you know, following rules. If I was at any other organization, it's been close to a year now, and I had not taken that IT security training, I wouldn't have had access to the computer by now. But there were a couple of gentle reminders, I haven't taken it yet, nothing happened. Rules are very important, and I, I just want to ask this staff, and especially our city attorney and legal counsel, to follow the rules. Well, this is just one example, but, and when it comes to following the legality and legal rules, I see many times rules are bent and pragmatism takes over. I'm for pragmatism in any aspect except for when it comes to rules and law. Thank you, I'm done.
Following the rules and enforcing the rules are slightly different, and then the other is, somebody has to be monitoring all of this. In my experience, most of it is not deliberate, it's that we don't have the systems in place to do our checklist. Vanna hasn't passed the security, okay, we're locking you out if you don't pass it in the next 30 days.
I'm gonna start an ad hoc committee on that.
Councilor Willis. And I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Okay, councilor Willis, and then council member Robinson.
So this is actually separate. This was my mistake because I tried to reach out to community members whenever they want to give public comment or address the council, and I just realized we just wrapped up our couple of public comment, and I literally told people to show up at the end of the meetings if they wanted to address the council, so I was gonna speak on behalf of a few folks.
Are they here?
Yes.
Well, we should hear from them, I think.
That's definitely up to the board. I'd rather have them, let them have their voice than me be their conduit, but yes.
Yeah, I would rather hear them than you.
Me too. We're on the same page. That's effective communication.
Yes, but before we hear them, council member Robinson.
Yes, councilman Robinson.
I feel like, I feel kind of compelled to circle back to point number two here, because I feel like we had a lot of back and forth on what was, and what was not allowed when it came to MOUs and, and the meetings with, with folks. And I felt like we were advised that if members of unions wanted to meet with us to explain to us their position, that that was fine, but we were not to negotiate or talk about, you know, any kind of, you know, any kind of negotiation. We could hear from them and go, thank you for sharing your thoughts. We, this came up over and over and over again, and we, I personally proceeded on what we were told as the way we're supposed to respond. And so I feel like, I feel like I need clarity from legal counsel on what is and what is not, what is and what is not the rule here, because I feel like I was advised, I was advised incorrectly.
Before Ms. Moore responds, it sounds like-
And I, I would like it from legal counsel, because I want to understand what the law is.
She's going to respond, but before she responds, I just want to make a comment. My comments had nothing to do with the legality. It was the practicality, and I want to circle back to that, but on the legal issue, counsel.
You know, I understand that that's what you've been advised, but, you know, I can't-
Microphone. Yeah, it's good now. I understand that that's what you've been advised, but I think we should have a separate conversation for me to, to kind of research a couple of things. One is kind of our past practice here, which I think, and then the, kind of where the line is legally. So I'm not answering your question because I need to talk to Dave and do my own research. And can I, because I know that that's, that's, I understand that that's-
I just feel like it came up over and over again, and, and we were given a certain direction that now is being contradicted, and so I, I, I am upset about it.
I think the past practice and what Henry's describing around the city council agreeing to establish ground rules with the negotiating team and agreeing to those on closed session is potentially a way to address the concerns, is that to say before negotiations, you establish what the ground rules are, and then everybody agrees what they are based on the norms that the council wants to agree to, and then proceed versus just looking at the, the legal dynamic, because I think, at least that's what I'm hearing from Henry, based on what is customary in other jurisdictions, is the actual establishment of ground rules based on trying to be thoughtful about how to negotiate the best on both sides.
So just-
Which is different than legal.
Yeah, so I, I do want to understand if it is illegal to hear from constituents who happen to be union members and have, hear their side of, of whatever it is the, the issue is. I would like to understand if that is an illegal thing.
If I might.
Mr. Mayor?
If I might, the ground rules, I think, does establish a playing field. There was one year where two council members were part of the bargaining team so that we could actually hear what the union was saying, because there were, there was a lot of disconnect between what the union was saying and what the bargaining team was saying. So, so they asked for a couple of council members to be part of the bargaining team. So I think that year, it was Melvin, council member Melvin Willis and myself, and Jale Myrick, I guess there were three of us. Yeah, who were, who were part of the bargaining team. And I think there's a difference between talking to employees and talking to the bargaining team. So, so you, there's, there's no, nothing that says you, you cannot talk to, to constituents who work for the city. I mean, they, they have their opinions, they have their gripes, you know, but it's not the bargaining team, so.
This statement says also includes staff members who will be affected by the MOU. So it just, it just feels very sticky. I mean, there's all kinds of people kind of coming up to me and expressing their opinions on the matter, and I would hate for a rule like this to get me into some kind of technical trouble because I'm listening to people expressing their-
So, so this is just a suggestion?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just making the point in a public forum that there's some serious issues with that.
Right, okay.
Well, just one last sentence on that. Customarily, I mean, at the end of the day, as long as it's legally permissible, you're free to do whatever you like. But customarily, the ground rules have, and it's to protect both sides. It has several elements, but ground rule number one is the one that I just mentioned. Once the bargaining commences, and you are the designated negotiators for the union, and three of them are representing you, ground rule number one is once that's done, you will only talk to the designated bargaining team, not to the council members over here, and they do not get to talk to any of the union members, they only get to talk to you. Ground rule number two says, there is no agreement until there's total agreement. We may agree on items, but we still got, no, no, we haven't reached agreement unless we reach total agreement. Ground rule, whatever number you want to give it, says that no public statements from either side unless we get to a place where we're not making any movement. We've declared that we, we can't move, and several other pieces of that. And the reason for that, again, is to protect both the city and the union. Negotiations have to be private, otherwise, forget all of that, and just open a chamber and negotiate your deal.
So, I, I feel like I'm, I'm not understanding who is establishing these ground rules-
The union, the union of the council.
And it sounds like one year that they were adjusted and negotiated, and I didn't really, I didn't really know that process this year. I didn't see that process this year. I don't know if it didn't happen, or it happened without us, so I guess I would like more clarity as one of my things around, you know, having a time, place, clarity, clear time and place where we establish ground rules around-
Can we get that up there?
Around MOU negotiations.
Right, okay. Can we get that up there? Can you capture that? Time, place and clarity for establishing ground rules for negotiating?
Are you finished?
Did that capture it?
Okay, then, councilmember Sepeta.
And I think we also should define what negotiation means in terms of our conversations. So if we are, let's say we are still allowed to go and speak with the unions, we're not spoken with them, I don't negotiate, and I tell them, you're talking to me only, I am but one person, I, I'm not speaking for the rest of the board, I am listening, right? So I, I never at any time do I ever negotiate, so I think that's a, something that we have to clarify in conversation, that none of us, I think, at least not for me, I don't go out and talk to them and say, okay, let's negotiate something.
You don't have to use the term negotiations, I'm gonna be direct with you. You're either in or you're out. You really are. You're either in or you're out. You can't have a council member who says, I'm really not negotiating, but I just want to hear your view of these terms. No. Yes. No. Yes. And no. Yes. You're either in or you're out.
Yeah, no, that year when it was the ad hoc committee with the three of us, I know we were expressly told, like, while we're in there, we were just sitting in there and listening, and then whenever we stepped into the side with our negotiation team, then, you know, was us just talking with the team, but we weren't allowed to speak while the union members were in the room at all. And I will say that, I know, I walk in, union members always hit me up to and say, hey, we just want to talk to you about our issues and concerns and just lay it out on the table, and I know when I step in front of them, I'm like, I'm not making any promises, I'll listen to what you have to say, but I'm not gonna say whether I support this or don't support this, because that has to be a discussion that we have with the council. One thing that I have heard a couple of times that has brought concerns to me during some of that process is whenever they lay out a proposal, even after I say that, then it's like, can we count on you to support this? It's like, I'm not gonna let you know what I'm gonna, what I'm going to do, or if they're saying, well, we heard from another council member that this is happening, and I'm like, well, I don't, I'm thinking to myself, well, I don't know how you heard that information because that's not public. So it's like a very delicate balance, like, if you're gonna listen, listen, but never indicate whether or not you're gonna support something or not support something.
Before the negotiations commence, you're free to speak with whomever you want under the ground rules. Bargaining table has not been set, so you, the union can say, council member Vanna, I want to tell you where I am. We need 12%. They can say whatever they want to say. They meet with you, and they can say, we need two additional holidays. Bargaining table has not been set. Once it is set, I strongly urge you to adopt ground rules that say, you are the bargaining team for the union, and we communicate only with you, and we don't go to your union members. We deal only with you. Otherwise, you honestly are working against yourself, I've said it already. Okay, anything else on this?
Can I?
Go ahead.
Can we just, I think we're, might already be doing this, but just to make sure, just look into the policy and updating it to at least Y2K, if not 2023, so getting rid of pager, but also putting in there email policy and etiquette. So what does a BCC mean? Because I still get emails from council members who are trying to not violate the Brown Act and a BCC, but that's the same thing.
Well, wait a minute, how does this work?
A blind copy.
That doesn't excuse you from the Brown Act. What, what did you just say?
That's my point. So making sure that we clarify it.
The council didn't hear that, the way I heard it.
And what about emojis?
Ms. Moore, did you have, I, I responded. BCC doesn't excuse you from the Brown Act.
And then, and then, right, because we're now in, and again, if we can move us to Y2K, I'll be happy, but 2023, it's even better, or 2024, since we're about to approach it.
But now, why are all this in your rules and procedures?
Because the word pager is on there, but also because-
You're just cleaning up, you bring it 21st century language, okay.
But also email policy, as we're moving forward with new tech, what can we do? I always have my laptop, right, and council member Robinson just mentioned this as well, right? I always have my laptop, and several of us do. Can, how can we use our laptop? I have saved many meetings because I can see things on my laptop that others might not be able to see. So using tech, using our phone, I think the reference in there, whenever this policy was changed, we probably didn't have texting.
Well, yes, they did.
So when they were saying phone, it's actually probably being on the phone, like, hey, what are you gonna vote on?
This policy was modified two years ago.
So I think we need to update it, because texting, you know, like figuring out the wording to update us in, in, on tech, and also making sure that we're not violating any rules as we use new tech going forward. I'm sorry?
You're gonna send us all of those comments, so we make sure that when we go through this. Well, they, they captured it now.
And they're writing it down.
Yeah, they're writing it down, okay. But to your comments about the lack of current technology, these rules were updated in 2021.
Okay, councilmember Robinson.
So if I can, I, I, just to add to the notes there, like, it would be good to have clarity, because I, I, like, like council member Sepeta uses his laptop, I use an iPad often to look at the, the council agenda and review things, it's a lot of things to remember, and I'll look back and read it, read things again, and sometimes, you know, I don't have my laptop or I didn't, or I didn't charge it, or, you know, I don't have it with me that day, and so I will use my phone to look at the agenda, because these things are not just texting devices, they're all kinds of things. I understand that we shouldn't be communicating with people, that's clear, and we'll make sure that that happens, but I also feel like we need clarity on the use of devices to keep, to be reading at documents and, you know, referring to quote, like, es, elements and things.
Basic to your public deliberations, and a comment is made somewhere, maybe here or later, that you should not be communicating with each other during a council meeting, except on the record. No texting and emailing about business that is before the council, it really should be on the record. That is key to transparency. Okay, these were last amended, January 2022, so all that technology existed, but we didn't have councilmember Sepeta to point out the ancient language.
No, actually, last year, I was still using the pager.
That, that's the problem. Well, we, we get the truth when we keep going here.
Yeah, so-
All right.
So I, I think it's time to go to public-
We are well past our time.
But it's time to, we need to do public comments.
And we still say we have the, for people from the public who want to comment.
We have three public speakers.
Or do we word them out? Madam clerk?
Yes, we have three public speakers. The speakers are Julie King, Elsa Stevens, and Dorian Reed, and you'll each have two minutes to address the council. Julia?
Good evening, members of the council.
Good evening, members of the council and mayor. Thank you very much for having us to speak, my, my fellow residents here at Heritage Park are here to speak to you about one thing tonight. And before I get started on that, I'd just like to thank you, but you did help us before, apparently, back in 2019, before, before I elected you personally, Caesar, Caesar Sepeda, I voted for you. I was that last vote that made you have to have a runoff, yeah. So I, so, yeah.
Thank you.
So, yeah. But, but no, so apparently, back in 2019, I was told that y'all did help us with this. So those of you that, mayor, you were on the city council back then, right? And those of you that were, thank you for helping us with this. We are facing a rent increase, and you helped us last time. It was supposed to be 12%, and you fought for us and got it down to 3%, I was told. So thank you, and I really appreciate that. And we are here because the same thing's happening again. It's a 5% increase. My fellow resident here, Dory, is facing a 5% increase for Christmas in December. She's getting a 5% rent increase. We are low-income seniors. It's a low-income senior complex, where the, you know, our, the owner of the place has a mandate, apparently is getting tax breaks for keeping it low income. And here, she's getting a 5% increase before Christmas. Many of our residents are getting this 5% increase, and they're saying, you know, the owner of the, the place, Heritage Park, is saying that they're going to raise it 5% again next year. So, for example, if my rent's $1,500, then it raises it to $1,575 for Christmas, for, if I'm Dory, I'm getting $1,575. And then the next year, the 5% would be on top of that. So on top of, you know, it's a larger, you know, money, in other words, because now it's 5% of $1,575. And, you know, we can't afford the 5% to begin with. We're calling on you through legislation or whatever means available to you, please help us fight this repeated rental increase of 5% that they're saying they're going to do every year because they can. Please make it so they can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elsa Stevens.
Merry Christmas. Yeah, 5% for seniors is really cruel. First thing I want to say is, thank you for being the first city to condemn war crimes. I'm proud to be a Richmond resident. Yeah, we're just here to remind you that Heritage Park is suffering again, and people are worried about keeping a roof over their heads.
And our last speaker is Dorian Reed.
I found out that on, I found out, okay, I found out that, that Heritage Park got bought, and we don't know who bought it, but now, when, now with the finances going up and everything else, and now we feel like we don't, where are we gonna go? And, and then on Christmas, it's hard, because like, right now, rent's gonna go up to $791. And I'm trying to find out how to keep it at a low, at a balance that can, can balance out everything without having it be sky high. And then trying to find out, out what to do next if it keeps on going high. I can't afford, and trying to figure out where are we gonna go if it gets too high?
That was our last speaker.
Thank you. I think the next item is a break.
A German.
Okay, well, I was ready to, to.
Nope.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say something about a next step, if that's okay. If that's okay.
Yes, please.
So I'm wondering, I, what I understand is the city staff, the city manager and staff will be, based on our feedback here, making some changes, modifications. I'm wondering if you might be able to give us that document early enough, or maybe even have one-on-ones with us to make sure that we are comfortable with it? Because, you know, it's been kind of confusing, and we're not all clear on, on what you'll be recommending, but we want you to, to recommend that clarity, but we just want to, it might be helpful to have, I mean, maybe not one-on-ones, that might take too long, but just send it to us early enough, and if we have questions, we can come back.
Maybe a study, a discussion and direction to staff item, so that way.
That would be good.
Okay.
Now, you do realize that we only covered the first item.
Oh, my goodness.
Councilmember McLaughlin, you wanted this as part of the goals and objectives. Excuse me. We haven't said nary a word about the other part. What is it, and this is the next meeting? What is it that you need from the staff to be effective? And what is it that you need from the honorable mayor to be effective? Oh, but the mayor gets to say and ask what he needs from each of you to be effective. And then the MLT gets to say what they need from all of you to be effective. And at the end of the day, the message is this. We're all on the same ship, and the goal is to sail, but if it does not sail, we're on the same ship. That's where we are, yes.
Two things. One of them, irony, we started out talking about five-minute debate or not, and we, because we run out of time.
This is a deliberative body.
But also, I want to make sure that we leave knowing, I, I just Googled, that's hence tech, and Forbes came up with the 15 most dangerous cities, and Richmond is number 15. However, it's Virginia.
Councilmember Bona.
We are not on the list, at least not the top 15.
I had to call this out, because we're the chief.
And this is as of January of 2023.
I've been saying Oakland, you need to be modeling Richmond.
Oakland's number 11.
All right. Well, we got that right, I'm glad you called that out. Mr. Mayor, on that note.
Are we gonna have more meetings, or we're?
Oh, you got to have another one, you haven't even talked about the seventh part.
We've only got halfway through.
You only halfway through, yes.
Yes, so with that wonderful note, I adjourn. We're done for the night.
Let's leave on a high note.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.